To the uh. I I went to the safety meeting on Walsh Road today. Carrie and Dean Riscus's house, there were fifty people there.
Wow.
Wow.
I was trying to just it was.
I I was really impressed by the turnout.
Well, Dean's a very, very loved person in our community.
Yeah, and this is a big issue.
Yeah, it's a big issue.
There've been four or five houses broken into, right?
In that area.
In that neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah, too bad, it's really sad.
Well, there's another one tomorrow night, right?
Uh, townwide, yes, this was just a neighborhood.
This is on Zoom, the one tomorrow night.
Right.
I went to the ADAP one and he did the same thing, so he's definitely getting word out, so he's, that's awesome.
Good.
What are we waiting for? Uh, the next twenty-five minutes to go by.
Twenty-five seconds.
Twenty-five seconds.
Yeah, you can't start until six, so to speak. Hi, Anne.
Okay, well, it's six o'clock, so everyone's here, let's call the meeting to order. We could please have the roll call.
Councilmember Toledo.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Widmer.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGolia.
I'm here, and why don't we do the pledge of allegiance now, since I missed it before we did the roll call?
Good idea.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, uh, is there any public comment?
And just for all the folks that we have on the call, um, this is the time for public comment for items that are not already on the agenda. If you have a public comment that's for an item on the agenda, you can make it during that item, and the mayor will give you an opportunity to speak. If you're calling by phone, you can dial star nine on your receiver, but if you're joining us by the Zoom link, you can click reactions to raise your hand or send a message in the chat. And I don't see anyone with their hand up, Mayor DeGolia.
Okay, great, um, so let's move on, the next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you have the written report before you, staff's on the line to answer any questions you may have. I did have a few questions and comments during my one-on-one with members of the council, most of those were answered in advance of the meeting.
Does anyone have a question or comment?
No, I'll take a comment.
Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I I just wanted to compliment the chief and the city manager on the improved police report for response time. It was very informative, breaking it down to all the different types of calls and what the times and goals are, so I appreciate them doing that. So that was it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let's move on then, uh, the consent calendar is next up, that is items five through fourteen. Uh, would anyone on the council or anyone from the public like to pull an item from the consent calendar? I don't see any indication of that.
Nor do I, I'm just scanning the crowd here, and I don't see anybody looking to do that.
And uh, if anyone doesn't have a specific comment, Bill, would you like to comment?
Yeah, um, yeah, I live in the vicinity of item number thirteen, and so I'll recuse myself with regards to that when we, when we do our vote.
Okay, great.
Make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you.
With the acknowledgement that Vice Mayor Widmer is accusing himself from item number thirteen.
Do I have a second?
So I I'd like to actually, um, Mayor DeGolia proposed that we take a motion on items, um, taking items thirteen first and then do the balance of the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
That's fine. So can I assume your motion applies to item thirteen and and the second?
Yes.
Uh, and the vice mayor is recused from this?
Yes.
We do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Toledo.
Uh, in favor.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Widmer is accused from this item number thirteen, which is the donation of speed feedback signs on Lynnwood Avenue, and Mayor DeGolia.
Hi.
Thank you, and then I'll, since we have a motion and a second for the remaining consent items, I'll just go down the roll call for that.
Very good.
Councilmember Toledo.
In favor.
Thank you, Hawkins.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Widmer.
Hi.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and the next item on the agenda is item fifteen, which is a public hearing regarding the appeal of the planning commission decision to deny a heritage tree removal permit at one elm place. And uh, just, uh, we haven't addressed uh, this kind of an appeal previously, so let me go through a couple of items. In this case, the council is acting in an adjudicatory manner and not in its legislative capacity. Members of the council need to publicly announce any testimony or evidence that he or she has received outside of the hearing process and describe any conflicts of interest that the council member may have concerning this matter. And any member with a conflict of interest will be disqualified from indicating on the matter. And I I I will ask everyone to indicate if they have uh, either a conflict of interest or any evidence or testimony that they've received outside of the process, and after that, I will ask the staff to make a presentation on the background of the item. Uh, the staff will have ten minutes to present, and, or no, that, yeah, uh, after the staff presents, then uh, the council will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff, and then I'll ask the appellant and any interested men, members of the public to speak. The appellant will have ten minutes to make his or their presentations uh, that may be divided between different parties if there's more than one party that wishes to present. The the appellate group will provide uh, testimony and relevant evidence regarding the matter. Following the presentation by the appellant, members of the public will be given the opportunity to present testimony, and public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. The appellant will have the response, the the opportunity to respond uh, to any of the statements that are made uh, during public comment, uh, but they may not introduce new testimony or evidence or restate their prior testimony at that time, they just can respond to what public comments have been made, uh, and the appellant will give, be given five minutes for that rebuttal. Following that, we will close uh, the public hearing, uh, or continue it at the council's option. And staff may be asked to address questions that have been raised by the appellant or in the public testimony. And finally, the council will then deliberate on the matter and adopt findings if appropriate. I will, so I I don't know if the city attorney wishes to add anything to that, but that's sort of the framework I'm looking at.
Thank you, Mayor DeGolia, I do have one item to add, um, because the city attorney's office was not working with staff on the preparation of this item. The city attorney's office is free to assist the council in providing any legal advice with respect to the process, there's no conflict of interest in that regard. Furthermore, in accordance with chapter seventeen point zero six point one hundred of the town's municipal code, um, this appeal before you is considered de novo, what that means is that you may hear all of the evidence outside of what the planning commission had determined and make your own uh, determinations, you do not have to defer to their decision. Um, you are free to come up with your own rationale, conclusions and findings, however, you must state your basis for the actions. Any aggrieved parties following the conclusion of this appeal, which is final, uh, may seek judicial review of that decision in accordance with the California Government Code or the Code of Civil Procedure. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so now I will ask any member of the council to announce any testimony or evidence that they have received outside of this hearing related to this matter, and to indicate separately, but to indicate if anyone has a conflict of interest with regard to the case.
Mayor DeGolia, I'll go.
Yeah, please.
I I do not have any conflict of interest at all, but I did go and personally walk and view the site, I don't know if that is information that should be disclosed, and I did, um, you know, walk around the property, looked at the property, looked at the existing conditions, and uh, spent maybe fifteen, twenty minutes with the um, appellants.
Right, okay, thank you.
I also visited the property.
Okay.
Do you have any conflict of interest?
No.
Okay.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I I visited the property, actually right after you, and and the owner was there, and he explained about the the trees, and then I got an email, which I did not respond to, from Betsy Colby.
Oh, I got that email also, sorry, I think we all did.
Yeah, that's part of the package, I think.
Right.
Uh, well, yes, and I visited the property right before Bill did. Uh, and I spoke to the appellant, uh, he was there when I visited, I was probably there for ten minutes, uh, and I received Betsy Colby's email. Diana? And I don't have a conflict of interest.
Yeah, I don't need it.
I don't have a conflict of interest, but I did not go to the site, so if it's possible, I prefer not to vote on it, if that's possible.
I I I think you, anyone can choose not to vote on any item at any time.
Okay.
The site visit is not a prerequisite to any council member from deciding whether they can fully participate, the staff report testimony today um, can serve as the basis for a decision, but it's up to you whether you'd like to state or not.
Yeah, I understand that, but the resident felt that the uh, that it was a problem that people didn't actually go and see it, and because they didn't see it, they couldn't understand their unique situation, so I'm also in the camp of having not been able to get there to see it, so that was my thought process.
Okay. Okay, uh, I think that satisfies the requirement that each of us indicate uh, what are, what are in fact ex parte communications on this matter, uh, and uh, there is not a conflict of interest from anyone on the council. Uh, so let's go forward, and I think the next step is for the uh, staff to present the background of the item.
Thank you, Mayor, Stephanie Davis, Principal Planner, I'll be giving a brief presentation. So, good evening, again, tonight the council is being asked to consider an appeal of a planning commission decision which denied the request for a heritage tree removal permit to remove three heritage redwood trees at one elm place, so just a brief um, overview of the site itself. It's about one and a quarter acre site, it is developed with a main residence, a swimming pool, a poolhouse and a detached garage. The property owner does have future plans to keep all of the improvements I just made mention of, except for the main residence, which they are proposing to demolish and replace with a new two-story main residence that would also include a basement. So to date, um, and Anthony, if you could pull up the uh, map image, um, when you have the opportunity, please. Uh, to date, the town arborist has approved the removal of one tree, as well as approved a tree protection zone or TPC exception for another tree uh, to accommodate the future proposed main residence development that I previously mentioned. So at the January Planning Commission meeting, the commission did vote three, one, to deny the associated request to remove the three heritage redwood trees. Um, these three trees are located outside of the main buildable area. Just a quick overview of the image that popped up here on the screen, um, if you can see the three red axes marked at the bottom center of this, of the map there, those are the three heritage trees that are being requested for removal. That light blue line uh, that forms that irregular parallelogram shaped area, that is the main buildable area of the site, or where the main building could be situated. And to the left over there, um, are the two uh, town arborist approvals that I previously made mention of. Blue X indicating a tree that has been approved for removal, and that green X indicating the tree that has been approved for a tree protections on exception, and what that means is that tree is to remain, however, there's been an exception approved, so that building or construction, I should say, can be situated closer than the standard allowable distance of a ten times TPC. Um, back to, uh, just to conclude my overview of the um, site itself. Um, so the, um, following the planning commission's decision to deny the removal of those three trees, the property owners did file the appeal of this decision and what is being considered at tonight's meeting. So the full planning commission staff report packet, its attachments, as well as a video to the meeting and the draft meeting minutes have been included as part of the council staff report package for reference. So the Appleton Municipal Code does provide six listed criteria uh, in the heritage tree ordinance in considering whether to approve or deny the removal of any heritage tree. These three, excuse me, six listed criteria are specified in the council staff report. Um, the applicants have submitted a very detailed narrative outlining their basis of appeal that also was included as an attachment to this report, um, but I will summarize, uh, the property owners do find that their request for the tree removal meets specifically two of the listed criteria, uh, first, they believe that the trees have probability of a public safety hazard, personal injury or significant property damage as a function of proximity to existing structures and objects of value uh, as an interference with the utility services, uh, I read that is verbatim from the municipal code. Specifically, the appellants note that the tree's existing location, which is four feet from their existing main residence, and the fact that the three trees are growing to be intertwined together that effectively function as one tree combined with the precedent set on their property of another healthy heritage tree that uh, did fail and caused damage to their property uh, supports their basis of meeting that municipal code criteria for removal. So the second criteria that they cite, um, the property owners, that is, to support their request is criteria six, which reads, again, I will read verbatim from the municipal code, "The necessity to remove the heritage trees to allow reasonable use or other enjoyment of the property when there is no demonstrated feasible alternative to the removal while meeting other adopted goals and policies to the greatest extent feasible." So the owners note that the trees and their resulting tree protection zone uh, combined with the tree's close location to improvements both existing and proposed, the extensive shading and shedding that the trees um, conduce, as well as the existing location of overhead utility lines in the rear of their site and other existing physical improvements such as their swimming pool, poolhouse and detached garage, which are to remain as part of their future development plans, combined with the TPZs or tree protections, those of all the other forty onsite trees uh, that are to remain on their property, do not allow them reasonable use or enjoyment of their property, and that based on the uh, detailed materials included in your staff report have demonstrated no feasible feasible alternative. Uh, they do note support that has been received uh, in writing from three of their neighbors for supporting the request to remove the trees. They also have proposed an associated replanting plan that consists of eight new trees to um, mitigate the removal of the three trees they are requesting for removal. Of those eight trees, all are of oak species, four at thirty-six inch box size, and the remaining four at fifteen gallon size. And as noted, all other heritage trees, with the exception of the one that has previously been approved by the town arborist for removal, are to remain as part of their conceptual proposed development plans. So the town arborist has reviewed this appeal uh, um, application, all of the materials submitted with it, and it all has prepared a professional opinion memo also included as an attachment to the council staff report. The town arborist does note that based on her review of these three trees that she would be able to make the required findings in order to support a potential tree protection zone or TPC exception for these trees, so lesser distances than the code otherwise would require for construction to effectively be closer at both the her staff level, as well as one that would trigger the need for a planning commission level TPC exception. So again, this would reduce the required protection distances down to eight times of a TPZ for the proposed main residence basement, and down to a six times TPC for the main residence. So as these exceptions, uh, potential exceptions, I should say, would still require reductions and revisions to the proposed main residence plans, the such TPZ exceptions were not elected to be pursued um, by the property owners. Uh, the town arborist does further opine that there are other additional trees onsite that uh, the project arborist has noted to be in either fair or poor con, poor condition, and that if evaluated for their removal, could potentially be considered in a revised main building approach layout. And lastly, the town arborist further opines that the existing physical conditions of the trees do not pose a safety or hazard concern in her professional opinion, and for these reasons is recommending that the planning commission denial to remove the three heritage trees be upheld. However, should the council find that the application does meet the municipal code criterias that would be able to support the tree removal, and a determination is made to uphold the appeal, staff has included a draft heritage tree approval certificate as the last attachment within your council staff report, uh, and would be recommending that, excuse me, uh, any approval um, require the uh, associated approval of such conditions as specified within that certificate. Uh, notably, there is one condition within that draft approval certificate that would require the property owners to implement their proposed replanting plan, again, total of eight new trees proposed as part of this application, all of oak species, four of thirty-six inch size and four of fifteen gallon size. Um, those proposed replanting quantities and size uh, do exceed the minimum municipal code replanting requirements um, for the removal of three trees. Specifically, the base municipal code replanting requirements uh, would be either nine fifteen gallon trees, six twenty-four inch box trees, or three fifteen gallon trees, plus three thirty-six inch box trees. So there's a variety of means uh, that the municipal code offers, but again, the proposed replanting plan does exceed all of those minimum requirements. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has, um, our town arborist is also available to answer any more specific tree detailed questions that the council may have, thank you.
Great, thank you, Stephanie. Uh, any questions from members of the council?
I have one, I don't understand that ten X and eight X, uh, is that, is that related to the diameter of the tree or what?
Yes, it is, the tree protection zone or TPC distances are a function of the tree's diameter.
I have one question to the mayor.
Go ahead.
So we keep referring to it as uh, three heritage trees. Um, it is, uh, there are three trees there, uh, and two of them are quite large in diameter, but there's one that, and what what constitutes a heritage tree at that point, because there's one that looks kind of spindly, actually, like it was an offshoot, you know, um, it looks, so that's my question.
Sally, uh, if I could ask the town arborist Sally Ben Stelton to please provide the specificity on the definition of a heritage tree specific to these uh, three redwoods?
So in this case, we would consider those three separate trees in a grove, so at this point, most likely their roots are connected, um, but we would still consider them three trees, uh, and so each one would need to be fifteen inches in diameter to be considered a heritage tree, and that, and that one is more than fifteen inches in diameter.
The little spindly one, the spin is, okay, more than fifteen inches in diameter, I guess compared to the other, it looks pretty.
I I have a question, uh, my question is, in looking at the six criteria uh, that are used, that are part of the code for considering removal of heritage trees, I think I understand these pretty well, and I understand there's a lot of focus on item six, but the the one that I don't fully understand is item three, which is uh, focuses on the number, species, size, location of the trees. How how would that come into play um, as a uh, item that um, might relate to this?
I can answer that, I could take it for a stab in Sally, if you'd like to uh, supplement anything. So I would interpret uh, criteria number three as a criteria means that the council could consider looking at the existing physical conditions of a property. So in this case, the number of trees on this particular site where they're situated, how healthy they are relative to the specifics of the application request, which is the removal of three redwood trees uh, noted to be of good health, situated pretty closely together, I'd say in the front center location of the property, and then combining all of that with the proposed replanting plan of both the species, size and location to look at an overall cumulative approach of what the resulting uh, number, species, size and location of trees may be on this property should the removal be considered.
Okay.
I I have nothing to add.
Okay. Uh, any other questions from anyone on the council? Okay, uh, I don't hear any questions, so this is the time when the appellant has an opportunity to make their presentation. Yeah, you're muted, there you go.
Hey, well, thank you, um, thank you, everybody, um, I'm Noah, this is my wife, Mikey. Uh, first off, I want to thank the council, uh, for, you know, considering this and also uh, for coming out to our house. I think it's been mentioned from the planning commission, we have a very unique property that we love, and we really appreciate all of you coming out, I just want to thank the staff, they've been fantastic, I thought Stephanie did a a great review just then. Um, and then we have some friends on the, who have, and community members are supporting us, I want to thank the Iversons, I I see the Bacons, I see the Picards, um, I see Eunice and Herb, so so thank you very much, we appreciate it, everybody. Um, with that, I I prepared a brief presentation, um, I worked at McKinsey, so, you know, if if it comes across as that, I I apologize, it's a I'm I'm the, I'm I'm very much uh, part of that, just a a quick background here, um, we moved in eleven years ago uh, to a heavily wooded property that we love, there are forty heritage trees on our property. Um, we've been told that that is is above average, and we moved in with a long-term plan to basically rebuild our our, both, in two thousand and thirteen, we built a poolhouse, it's for people, it's lots of different style, the color, the roofing material, with a plan to either renovate or knock down or make. with a plan to either renovate or knock down our main house and build our forever home. In two thousand and nineteen, we started looking at that. We flirted with the remodel. I think, as many people, we then decided to go with it and we, you know, we're going to build our forever home here in Atherton where we are here. And, you know, we put in an ADU in it. We have spent an awful lot of time, our architects on the call, if there are any questions around how we can save the home and how we can fit it. And ultimately, there's really three trees that have become, this sort of drove of trees in the front that have become problematic. This is them. And I know everyone on the council scene are referring to us. These are the three, these are the three monsters that have brought us here today. That is, that is the trees. You get a feel for kind of how close. I think it's four feet from the house is the number. We've got, and Stephanie did a great report. I think it's on almost seventy-five pages now of all the information on these trees and the options. I know more about TPZs and eight, ten, D two, three, six than I ever thought I would. This is, this is our lot here. This is the forty heritage trees. There's also nine other neighboring trees that put TPZs into us. It's a five-sided lot. It's somewhat, that's somewhat irregular. You can see in the front. We have a small frontage on a cul-de-sac. We love it. There aren't too many places we can put the house before we start running into both other TPZs. And the other thing that this diagram doesn't fully show that I think people got a feel for when they came out is in the very rear of the house, which is the part marked rear, rear, there is, there's PG power lines that run through there. We have tried very much to put up trees to block them that are a great distance away. And PG comes out and is very nice and says they won't, you know, they'll trim the trees but not top them. And then we come home and they've topped the trees. So we have, I think, as someone said, no longer, we have sort of a hedges there of where PG has come in. So that's what it, it pushes us back much further from that back than I think maybe this diagram itself shows. And so we've, we've been looking at, at sort of saying, how do we make the pieces work? How do we preserve sort of the maximum number of, you know, trees without running into other TPZs? And, you know, unfortunately, regrettably, these, these three trees that are, you know, healthy trees are the three that we've, you know, we've asked to take down. We had a huge tree, a huge heritage tree fall right out, right after we moved in. You know, welcome to being a homeowner. It took out, took out a big part of our garage. You know, the best part is no one, you know, no one was injured in it. But that sort of, we have had experience with heritage trees falling irrespective of, you know, the health of them. And this was, we were just out of escrow. We'd had someone actually inspect our trees in escrow. So it was thirty days after the trees had been inspected. You know, in December, we were rejected three to one. You know, a bunch of things on the process here. I think the most important one is the one commissioner who came out, saw the property, was the one person who voted for removal. I think his, his exact words, and I've, I've listened to the, the recording many times, had was, he said, the trees are too big and they're in the wrong place. And I think that summarizes it kind of the best. You know, there's a lot of other discussion in there around other things. But, but ultimately, we think it's sort of coming out and seeing it is what really matters here. You know, Stephanie did a great job talking about eight, ten, D two and D six. Eight, ten, D two is all about safety. That is a criteria under which we believe these are removable. In addition, I think eight, ten, D three, which I want to thank you for finding is also a criteria. I think Stephanie and, you know, that was discussed is also a possible criteria. And then the third one is, and the one I think that we spend the most time on is this eight, ten, D six, which is around the reasonable use and other enjoyment of the property. And we can go through kind of why our situation is pretty unique with the five, with just the shape and the others or the, you know, the word hardship, but that it really, there isn't that much buildable area. And we thirty, thirty-seven percent of it is in TPZs. Trying to find something is very challenging. The other two things I want to call out here is the SB nine. I saw there's a later agenda item on SB nine. I'm sure that's going to be a lot of, you know, this council as well as every council in California's effort. You know, we have an ADU in this application. How that will affect tree removal rules going forward? You know, that's probably months, if not longer, away. However, at least in the spirit of that is increasing densification and removing obstacles to that. The general plan, I think every town in the peninsula has been told about densification, densification. This is another housing unit in Atherton that will push for it. We also began, you know, sort of this long-term rebuilding previously to two thousand and nineteen. Our experience in two thousand and thirteen was very, very different with, with heritage trees than it is, is today. And so kind of while we've been here and sort of underway this, the rules have changed quite a bit from Atherton. I'll, I'll address each of these criteria separately. The first one is safety. You know, these trees are healthy. There's no dispute about that. They weren't healthy. I think the staff would, you know, this would be a staff level decision. You know, as I mentioned, on our property, we have had trees fall that have been judged healthy by arborists within, you know, thirty days before it. In addition, and this is, I've, in the past, Atherton has looked at two criteria when determining removal of heritage trees. One is the health of the tree, but they have also looked at the location of the tree. There is a two thousand and fourteen decision, and some people might remember about a tree in playground at Laurel, the upper school, which is obviously incredibly dangerous place for a tree. And the, the city school district actually called out the location of the tree as one of the criteria as well. And this is, you know, these three trees are four feet from our house. Even with proposed TPZs, they will be, you know, very, very close to our house. You know, their, their failure would be catastrophic. So the other one goes down to the reasonable use and enjoyment. And, and there's, there's a bunch of points here that, that we can unpack. I mean, the biggest one is we have forty heritage trees and dozens of more very, very large trees that aren't quite here. I mean, you know, I think as, as councilwoman Lewis said, a heritage tree isn't actually that big a tree when you look at it. But we've got a lot of them. We have a lot that aren't even quite as big. They all come with TPZs. We love them. That's part, that's why we live in Atherton. We're big fans. We think going from forty to thirty-seven, plus with eight replanted that will get there quickly is pretty strong. You know, these three, given where they were planted, so close to the buildable area and that the TPZs, you know, are very large, do put this kind of hardship around. However, we want to build, we're bumping up against them. And so that's sort of a unique, it's very difficult to build and do very much there. Fundamentally, we can't use our front yard. I think somebody might have knocked on our front door. We don't use our front door because, you know, we've been told not to aggressively prune redwoods and, you know, we kind of have to duck. It's, you know, it's unusual having a front yard, but it, you know, we would like to change that. We have a five-sided lot with a cul-de-sac. There aren't a lot of five-sided lots on a cul-de-sac in Atherton. It doesn't seem like there's much of a precedent here. I mentioned, we have the, we have the, just going down the list of the large electric lines. PG, the main power runs through our yard. They are very, very, very aggressive in pruning. You know, it's nice. I guess they need to do that, but it limits the ability in our backyard to really plant shade or do much back there or put things under it, even if Atherton would allow us. PG and their restrictions and the easement they have has always been very difficult, which puts us back to the front of the lot and sort of the way they apply there. You know, we've tried really hard to do the replanting. We've exceeded the recommendation. We've worked with the town. They've been fantastic around, what would you recommend? What type of trees do you want, you know, exactly how they push around? We believe we have a, you know, we exceed the minimum because we like the trees. We want to do the shade trees. We want to make sure everyone's happy with that. And so Atherton's going to get more trees from this, not fewer. It's going to be very wooded. We love it. We love walking here. We love Lindenwood. That's why we live there. There's another ADU, which is a nice bonus for Atherton. And there's really, i- if we are denied this, you know, we have a bunch of people on this call. The precedent is effectively no help, is that heritage trees cannot be taken down. That, I mean, that is, there are new rules now. I know this is one of the first ones that's gone through. But, you know, if we are denied, there is a precedent being set here that Atherton basically will never let trees come down unless they're healthy. If they're, unless they're unhealthy. And I think that would be a shame because fundamentally, people will take down trees that are getting near heritage size and they'll never plant near their buildable area. I think that's just, that, that's, that's not a great general plan to have people measuring their trees to whether they're seventeen or eighteen inch in diameter and saying, well, maybe it's time to take the seventeen inch down. And given how humans are, I think we all know that that's the behavior that, that would, would have to come out of this. The other thing is, there's a lot of support for this. Our neighbors who are fantastic, the guards, the verdiles and the Donatellis have all submitted, you know, letters of support. They've been very enthusiastic. I want to again, thank all our friends who joined us today on here as well, supporting. Additionally, there was one letter from the public, which people may have seen. I think it was an email that was submitted by not, not one of our neighbors, but someone who was one lot over. She said she would be supportive if we replant large trees. So we believe she is supportive. She also left another comment about concern about birds that are nesting in the trees. We have no tree nests in our trees. And in fact, our neighbor who abuts her has several large trees with birds' nests. We think she confused them. I had asked Ralph to reach out and say, look, I'd love to meet or talk on the phone. And I haven't heard back from her. But we believe from her notes, she supports this as well, given the replanting plan that we have. You know, so we, you know, we believe we've, under existing criteria, we meet them. We have public support and this is, in the community. I just want to thank again, everybody on the commission as well as the staff and our community who's come out as well for this. So thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Noah. Okay, this is a time where anyone who has public comment can give public comment. And if you would like to give public comment, if you click on the reactions button, button under the image on your screen, you can raise your hand. Megan Iverson.
Hello, I'm Megan Iverson and I live in Atherton on, at five sixty Middlefield. And I think one thing that the Kindlers haven't said about themselves, but it's really well-known, is that they're an incredible warm and generous family. And what happens is that everyone gathers at the Kindler's house and they are incredibly inclusive. The school community all goes there, the neighbors, friends, and it is a place where we have enjoyed, you know, just, just great times with friends and family. It really unites the community. And their kids, they have three young boys and their boys are getting bigger. Their friend groups are expanding. And I get why they want to change their house. I mean, it just, it serves the neighborhood. It serves the community. And, and I'm just in full support of, of their tree. Their house is like a forest. If, I know you all have been there. So I just wanted to raise my hand and, and give my total support for them.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. Is there any other public comment than anyone?
I see Ms. Yvonne Walker, mayor. And if I could just remind the public, if we could do our best to stay within the three-minute public comment time limit, we appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Muted.
There we go. Okay, now I'm unmuted. Thank you very much. So I, I also live in Lindenwood and absolutely love trees. And we have just agonized over some large trees that we had to take down because they were not healthy and they were a true risk to property and, and humans. So, and it just, oh, it just killed me when we had to take them down. I did not visit the property. I did look at the photos and I can tell from looking at those photos that these trees are priceless. They are not replaceable. Okay? You can plant as many trees as you want, but it's going to take decades and maybe even half a century to get something that looks anywhere close to what that little three tree grove is. So I, I really, I really have a hard time saying that you ought to be able to chop them down because you want a bigger house. That's not my priority. I know some people it is. It's not my priority. My priority is you build the house around the trees. And I have seen that done many, many places in Atherton. And I really appreciate the people who do that and take that extra step because these, these trees are truly irreplaceable, in my opinion. And so what I, what I would, so I, I definitely agree with the planning commission's decision. And I'm, I apologize to the owners, but that's just where I am. And I would, I mean, I would suggest that if they want to go forward with a new house, that they accept the, I think there's some compromise that was offered in terms of maybe changing some of the TPZs. Or I don't know all the technical terms, but perhaps you'd be given a little more leeway without removing the trees. And I would really strongly encourage the powers that be to consider that avenue, not cutting them down.
Thank you. I'm scanning the crowd to see if anyone else has their hands raised. And I don't see any other hands, mayor.
Yeah, this is, this, yeah, I, I can't see where I can touch to raise my hand, but I just wanted to quickly say hello. And so my, my whole career has been restoring historic homes in Malibu and Los Angeles and doing big projects, some of the most expensive homes in the world. I've been on many of these calls, sitting on lots of commission hearings and protests and appeals. And there, most of my clients, they weren't doing the right thing. They, they were pushing the limits. They were trying to get more than they should. They're trying to get a better line of sight. They're trying to block a neighbor. There was, there was always some sort of selfish motive. And I don't see that here. And I've known Noah a long time and Mikey, my kids kind of grew up there. Their annual pool party is something not to miss. They're great neighbors and I appreciate the arborist and the city and commission. And, you know, I really think it's great that Atherton, you know, holds, holds accountability for things like protecting trees like this, that, you know, any tree that big, that old is more valuable standing than cut. And I know that. I've worked for years to, as a sustainability advisor for my projects as well. And so I, I get the spirit of what's going on. And Noah and Mikey, the intention they have, it's, it's not on some shallow basis. It's not, it's not self-centered. It's not about them or their house. And I appreciate what Mrs. Walker said. I really do. But there's always some kind of middle ground. And, and I think what you've done to relax, relax the building limits so that the trees could be close to the house, it, it's interesting. But most of the, most of the issue here I have is with their concern for the damage and the size of these trees in, in a fall. So Noah and Mikey do what they say they're going to do. They're, they're going to plant trees back and try to stay within the spirit of what this is all about. I think you should believe them. They're, they're good people and they're here to stay too. They're not here speculatively. They're not flipping the house. They're, they're here for the long haul. And I think they're trying to take a position because it's their property. It's their house. It's their life. And I support them and, and I support the city too. This is a tough one. But if anybody would do the right thing, if, if this, there's a compromise, they would, they would, and I think do more. So I don't know if the arborist has any creative ideas or just to look at this just from a little different angle, other than just the straight line. You know, maybe that, maybe that's another, maybe it's worth another review. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. And I will look for hands raised and waved. So don't see anybody else at this time, mayor.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing and return to the council for any comments or questions that members of the council have.
Is Mayor DeGolia, would you like to allow the appellant an opportunity?
Oh, that's right. Sorry. You're right. I missed that. Sorry. Mikey and Noah, if you'd like to respond to any of the public comments, you have an opportunity to do so. Just please be aware, you're prohibited from restating what you previously said. And the intent of this time period is to specifically respond to public comment, if you wish.
Thanks, Mayor DeGolia. And appreciate that, all the public comment from, from our neighbors. I just wanted to quickly respond to some of the comments from Ms. Walker. Thank you for, for really understanding what we're, what we're looking at. I do walk around Lindenwood and Atherton pretty much every day, especially given the, the work from home situation for the past, past couple of years. And I really haven't seen a property that is, that is similar in their number, the number of trees. And so, you know, it does pain us as well to think about losing beautiful trees that, you know, at this point are considered healthy. But given the limitations of almost forty percent of our buildable area being taken up by protected trees, it's really a specific hardship and about our property. And so we agree with you. We love trees, and we're intending on planting very large, oversized, you know, going way above the expectations for replanting and also to have additional screening for our neighbors.
Okay, great. So I think now we can go to council comments or questions. Bob, did you want to comment?
Oh, yes. First, to the point of the hazard. I've lost two large trees, one of them just as tall as the one, the ones in their yard. It crashed through the garage ceiling and somehow did no damage to the cars. It cost about $25,000 to have the damage repaired and get the tree taken away. But, and I lost a large oak tree, and both of these trees were extremely healthy. So that does happen. I agree with the planning commissioner, the chair, who said these are the wrong trees in the wrong places. Redwood trees in this environment here are extremely messy. Everything that falls out of them stains something. And by the, by the middle of the summer through fall, they, they actually look terrible. You probably should have had everybody come out and look at them when they looked terrible. And in addition, I took out a redwood tree a number of years ago and then replanted the lawn, because of course, as you know, the lawn won't grow under a redwood tree. Nothing will grow under a redwood tree. And it took, it took literally months to dig up all the roots. And the roots of a redwood tree, as Sally will tell you, can be six, eight, ten, literally ten inches in diameter, and they go everywhere. So I wouldn't be surprised if you'll have to do some special foundation work if you leave, if you build as your plans show and leave those trees, because those roots are going to try and tear your foundation apart. They were doing it here at my house. So for all those reasons, I wholeheartedly support what they want to do. And I think their replanting plan in a few years will provide even better tree situation for that street.
Bill?
Sure. Yeah, as I stated, I went out and I looked at the property, and I agree that, you know, the trees are majestic. And they look healthy. For me, though, I'm looking at it with regards to number six, okay? So really, when you go out their front door, which we didn't do that, but I walked over by it, you're hit in the face with the redwood branches, and those redwood branches are going to continue to grow. So even if you build a house on it, they're going to be buttoned up against it. You know, I feel that, you know, the TPZ, you know, everybody has to remember, the TPZs that are shown are off the trunk, the center of the trunk, not off the canopy. So the canopy is substantially larger than what's on the trunk. And I can see, you know, the applicant, you know, saying, you know, we can't, we can't build your, we don't have any buildable area. You're taking forty percent of it. They can't move other things, which I thought was kind of surprising, that somebody would, you know, say, well, why don't you move your pool? Or your poolhouse that you just built? And I mean, that's some of the things that I hear with some other towns, architectural review boards, which I think is kind of crazy. But I do believe that, you know, that there is a risk underneath those power lines. They have a tremendous number of redwood trees there already, very, very large ones. And I think that, you know, the only suggestion I would make is perhaps have a few more of the fifteen-inch items, make them a little bit larger. I think that that would hopefully make people feel a little bit better about it. But I fully support what they're doing and what their request is, and I agree actually also with Bob on what he said. So thank you.
Elizabeth?
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mikey and Noah, for coming and speaking in front of us. And Stephanie, for your, you know, very, very detailed, in-depth report. Staff has done a lot of work on this, and Sally, for your analysis also. I appreciate what the planning commission did in their ruling because if they were just looking at the plans and the, you know, objective observation of, well, you know, we'll do this, we'll do that, and it'll be fine. On a, just looking at the plans, you think, oh, yeah, well, it's no big problem. But if you go and actually look at the existing conditions, you will see that these trees are, although they are gorgeous and massive, and, you know, they belong in the redwood forest, they do not belong in the front yard of a house that's tucked back into a cul-de-sac and kind of cramped anyway, especially when there are so many other trees around. Now, I have to say, my first impression was that sixty years ago, the homeowners who moved to that house, to Lindenwood, and built that little ranch-style house, they went crazy planting every conceivable conifer and redwood tree around their property. And so here we are, sixty years later, and the sins of our forefathers are now in front of us. And, you know, it's not a natural situation. It's like, it's not that the house grew up around it. These trees were planted in the wrong spot. And there were two other redwood trees that were planted, you know, kind of in the back of the house, too. They've got so many trees on this property. It's amazing. And I think the replacement trees that they're proposing will, over time, just as these trees grew, will grow, and they will be more beautiful, actually, and more appropriate to the site. I don't think the house that they're trying, that they're trying to build is, you know, McMansion, gargantuan, whatever, whatever, you know, oversized. I don't, just like what Mr. Picard had said, that, you know, they're really, really reasonable people. I got that impression. I don't know them personally. But redwood trees are not native species to our area. And if they're going to plant a lot more oaks, I think that's the better choice. And if they plant them in their perimeter or outside, they don't have a lawn. They don't have a front entrance. They don't have anywhere to plant, you know, pretty blooming flowers and tulips and daffodils along their front walkway leading up to their house. And you just can't, not under these giant redwoods. I live under a redwood, and I have to park my car under the redwood. And I, during where it drops, Mr. Polito is absolutely correct. It just drops for three months straight, and I support duckies. I think that I, single-handedly. So I, you know, I love trees, and I love trees. It just pains me. I would hope that maybe if you take them down, you can maybe mill them, have them milled, and maybe you could make a redwood deck at your new house or use some of the lumber because they're pretty straight and strong. But Bob's also right about the roots because they will continue to grow and damage your substructure at some point. In fact, I think if anyone read the almanac or the next door, there was a posting about a tree in, on Middlefield Road, giant redwood tree being taken down in the 3,000 block because it was completely destroying the walkway. It was just, you know, it had grown so big that it was destroying the walkway and it became a public safety hazard. So, you know, with, I really support them taking these trees down. I thought maybe they could just take the really biggest one closest and maybe the little one and leave that third one. But since they're all conjoined, I think the best thing is to just, you know, clear that out, help, let them make a beautiful lawn and planting area, and then replant native trees throughout. And I think their planning plan is just fine, and it'll be better all around. That's my feeling. And I appreciate Chair, Planning Chair Eric Lane for going out and, you know, supporting it also. Rick, you're muted.
Thanks. Thank you. Bob, did you want to make another comment?
Yeah, just very, very briefly. Noah and Mikey, when I took this redwood tree down, of course, even though it was not that healthy, I, the bottom line is, I, a guy came here, McClanahan's took it down in eight- and ten-foot sections, dropped these one at a time, and I've got a guy that has a mill, and he came here with his tractor and his trailer, and he took them all away, where they get turned into furniture and/or planking, or if you wanted to make a redwood deck. You know, they have to dry it out first, but what this guy did is amazing. And so if you call me or email me, I'll give you the information.
Right. Okay. Diana, did you want to make a comment or ask a question?
Not really, other than to say that I really feel at a disadvantage having not actually seen the property. And as a principle, I'm not in favor of taking down trees, and I voted against the last tree that came before us to be taken down. But on the other hand, we have these committees because we need to look at the circumstances of each individual homeowner and all the situation. And with the forty trees and what everyone's had to say so far, I think this is clearly an exception. And the only other thing I'd like to say, on the other side, having said that, so I'm in favor of it, but I think on the other side of that, our fear is that we'll take away the bite if people think that they can just appeal. But I think it's our job to look at each case.
Great. Thank you. I agree with that. I think that it's very important for us to take a very careful look at every case. I think the comments that John Pickard made are particularly poignant, where we all know that people can be selfish and can have selfish motives. So we really have to look at each individual situation. And I particularly want to say that I have a great deal of appreciation for Sally Benz. I thought that her analysis of the situation here was extremely insightful. And I was looking for her language. She called these trees healthy and something else, and I couldn't find that second word. But it really defined for me the trees. I think what Ann Walker said is true. These are spectacular trees. They are very large, and particularly the one big one, but I think you have to look at them as a unit. They are truly spectacular. The problem is, they're really in the wrong place. And you can look at that property, and you can see that they have, I think that they have thirty redwood trees right now on the property, five of which aren't regulated, and twenty-five of which are. And those trees were all planted basically when the subdivision occurred. I know how fast these trees grow because when I planted my yard, I put in two redwood trees to complement redwoods that had been there for at least fifty years. And those two trees, because the stock is so healthy, they've just grown like crazy. They're not at the same level as the others, but they grow fast. And they're very substantial. And these trees, it's a shame to remove these trees because they're really spectacular trees. I just must admit that when I look at the criteria, there are two criteria that jump out at me. One is the number of trees and the species, and redwood trees are waterhogs. They are heritage trees, and we do protect them, and we're serious about that. The issue is they have thirty of them, and for the most part, they're in reasonable places. And these three trees totally deny them the use of that front lawn. And they've got three kids. I would, I would want that front lawn for my kids if I were there. So I can identify with them. That's an easy thing to do. But we really have to look at the criteria. That's our job in adjudicating this issue. And I think that the number of the species and health of the trees that exist on the property and the fact that these trees are in a location that denies the enjoyable use of the space, which is a very meaningful space on that property, is, to me, that's a reason to grant the appeal. But I am glad that the planning commission took this as seriously as they did, and I am really very happy with the analysis that our staff has done on it because I think we need that level of analysis every time that we're looking at this kind of a situation. We're not going to roll over and allow trees that are this healthy and this spectacular to be removed. It's just unfortunate. They were, they just planted them in the wrong place, and they were planted all at the same time. So, so do we need to take a formal vote, Mona?
We do. We do need a motion and a second, and we do need to make findings on the record. As the council has been deliberating, I have taken the liberty to read to you what I believe might be acceptable findings, and I can do that at your pleasure.
Great. Unless someone has another comment, now would be a good time. Okay, I don't see any other comments.
I'd like to make the motion if Mona would like to raise it for me.
Um, based on the collective concurrence of the council, despite the majestic nature of the redwood trees, the town council, given the unique facts of this case, finds as follows. Number one, redwood trees are not native to this region. Number two, the proximity of the trees to the buildable area and power lines poses a safety hazard to life and property. Number three, the trees do not allow the reasonable use or enjoyment of the property, and the alternatives do not feasibly allow the use of the buildable area without the same hazards present, given the location of the trees. And finally, the property contains a number of significant other heritage trees. And these particular redwood trees should not have been planted in their existing location in the first place. So given those findings, the council could make a motion to, if it wishes, to overturn the planning commission's decision and grant.
I think we need to amend your findings just in one little spot. Those redwood trees that were suggesting that they can take down are not near the power lines. The power lines are in the back, and that precludes them moving things in the back, further back towards the back. So it affects their, what they can do with their backyard.
So let me propose that we delete the first two items that Mona brought up. I think if we want to really deal with the fact that redwood trees aren't local, then that's a discussion for the heritage tree ordinance in general. But I think the last two items that you brought up are ones that I strongly support.
Through the mayor, I agree with what you're, where you're going with that because we don't want to set a precedent that just because a redwood tree is not native, that it is grounds for removal, right?
Right. It's a heritage tree, and it's absolutely protected in our code.
Right, right. But I think, I don't know about the, sorry, Bob, I'm sorry, that the second item that you are asking her to delete is?
That's the one with regard to the wires, the proximity to the wires. I personally don't see that. Bob?
I think you definitely need to add that all this is subject to the replanting plan that they've given us because that's, that's critical, the four thirty-six-inch oaks and the four fifteen-gallon oaks.
I think that we should make sure that includes the replanting plan, and the condition is that the draft approval certificate be signed.
That the?
Frankly, we didn't, I didn't bring this up, but I might as well bring it up now. The last time when we were The last time when we were discussing, um, uh, I I think it was at the last meeting, we were discussing uh, the size of the trees. We had a discussion about fifteen inch or fifteen gallon replacements. Maybe I'm confusing this with the park.
Oh, you're right. You're right. We said, we 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 thought that those were too small. And that's why I made the recommendation that they up the size of those fifteen.
So I would like
Too small.
I I would like to recommend that this be the four thirty-six inch trees and four twenty-four inch trees. I actually think they'll get the twenty-four inch trees are so much healthier and bigger than the fifteen gallon trees. I think they'll actually enjoy them more.
Well, you can go by the town center. There's, we've got uh, trees in boxes right now that will, you can see the
Those are forty-eight, those are forty-eight inch boxes.
Other ones.
There's some smaller one. I think there's some twenty-four, but
Yeah.
There might be thirty-six. I'm not sure what they are.
I'm all for the forty-eight though. We're not gonna
Well, I I if it, I I don't think this is yet an amendment because we're just discussing the criteria. Uh, I would support the third and fourth criteria and add a uh, a new criteria, which is that the replanning plan include the recommended four thirty-six inch box cork oats and which is spectacular tree and for twenty-four inch box, the other oats, I'm not familiar with it. But I'm happy to support.
Were those Valley Oaks? I think those are Valley.
Uh, no, I think, I thought they were blue oats. I don't know what that is, but but it, I, she's worked that, they've worked that through with Sally, I think, then
Did you?
I'm confident in Sally's judgment.
Yeah. And then they would have to sign the heritage tree removal.
Sign the draft approval certificate. I I think that's the way Stephanie characterized it.
But it's, it's this one.
It's the last item in the packet.
Page seventy-five of seventy-six.
Yeah, it's the heritage tree removal.
Perment.
Perment is seventy-five.
Right. That's, that's what I, but you were misstating it, I think.
What what is it, Stephanie? Can you help us with this? What's the certificate that the homeowners would need to sign?
Uh, it would be attachment six and the way that it's currently drafted, that's the approval certificate that lists a series of conditions. One of them does include reference back to the property owner's proposed replanting plan. But I'm hearing through the council that there may be some direction to um, uh, revise the proposed replanting plan to change what is currently proposed as for fifteen gallon uh, blue oaks to for twenty-four inch box sized gallon blue oaks. And actually, the certificate as drafted does not um, require a property owner's signature, but town planner's signature, which is consistent with how um, the planning department issues entitlement certificates.
Oh, got, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable? So we made a motion. Mona, who's gonna second? Up, Mayor?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Lewis and a second from Vice Mayor Whitmer.
I will do the roll call vote. Councilmember Pito.
I'm in favor of removing the trees. I don't know whether that's a yes voter or no vote or whatever.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Hawkins?
I'm gonna abstain. I was only gonna vote if it was a tie. It's not a tie, so I'm gonna abstain from voting because I didn't see it.
Noted. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, approval.
Vice Mayor Whitmer?
Approval.
And Mayor DeBulio. Thank you.
Right.
Okay.
That close out this appeal and the aggrieved party may appeal this decision to the Superior Court uh, pursuant to ten ninety-four point six of the California Code of Civil Procedure.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else we need to do on this, Mona?
No, we're done. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. We're moving on to item sixteen, which is the introduction of an ordinance amending the Atherton Municipal Code, uh, chapter eighteen point eight point sixteen noise pertaining to gas powered garden equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, this is also a public hearing, as you mentioned, for introduction of the ordinance amending the Atherton Municipal Code pertaining to noise largely related to gas powered garden equipment. Uh, this has been on the council's docket for probably for over a year. Uh, it's gone through the environmental programs committee. It's gone through the city council once or twice. And in November of last year, you assigned it to a city council subcommittee to work with staff to refine it uh, and then return it to the city council. So that's what's been brought to you this evening. So working with that ad hoc subcommittee, staff prepared the draft leaf blower ordinance that's attached to the staff report. Attachment one is the strikeout version, changing the municipal code. We can see where the changes are. Attachment two is the clean version. It proposes uh, a draft leaf blower ordinance with the following key points in response to the direction collected throughout the process. It prohibits the use of gas powered garden equipment on spare of the air days. It restricts the hours for gas powered garden equipment. Gas powered garden equipment may be operated Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM. There's authorized hours for electric powered garden equipment. Electric powered garden equipment may be operated Monday through Friday from eight to five, Saturday from ten AM to five PM, and Sunday from ten AM to three PM. Two-stroke gas powered leaf blowers will be, will not be permitted in Atherton after January one, twenty twenty-three. The restrictions noted applied to all properties in Atherton, whether it's residential, educational, open space, or governmental. Following preparation of the ordinance, there was also some discussion of enforcement concerns. The state, as you know, is banning the sale of all gas powered small engines beginning January one of twenty twenty-four. The subcommittee was attempting to create a phased in approach to the use of gas powered garden equipment, eliminating the use of two-stroke gas powered leaf blowers in twenty twenty-three and authorizing the use of electric powered garden equipment on weekends to encourage a transition. However, enforcement of these provisions may get more complicated as the town and state bans out certain types of equipment all the way up through January twenty twenty-four. So as a result, it was suggested that perhaps the town leave the basic small power gas engine regulatory framework to the state and focus solely on the use of gas powered leaf blowers by banning them in their entirety, two-stroke and four-stroke from a date certain moving forward, such as January first of twenty twenty-three, and then begin an education campaign from now until then, uh, also encouraging and and providing information related to any rebates for tradeouts that may be offered by the state or the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. This would streamline the enforcement process. And so if the council supports the simplified version, staff would make those adjustments to the ordinance. Uh, and then we could continue to move it forward in March. Uh, that concludes the staff report.
Okay, uh, are there any questions from members of the council to staff on this issue? Okay, I don't see any questions. Uh, I'll take any public comment, uh, which uh, can be indicated by raising your hand from the reactions button on the bottom of the screen. Ann?
I'm sorry to be one who does too much talking, but um, I can just say that uh, lately, like in the last five to ten years, leaf blowers have been the bane, the bane of my existence. I cannot enjoy my backyard on an afternoon because there's always somebody within earshot who has gardeners who are running these horrible noisy machines. And it's, it's really, it's really quite disturbing and it's gotten worse and worse and worse. Um, in addition, as you all know, the gas powered versions of these machines are polluting the environment and the air that we breathe. So it's, it's a, it's a double whammy to me and it's, it's bad. And I would go much farther than uh, the town is proposing to go because I don't think that's far enough. Um, I think, I think that first of all, if if I were making the rule, I would flat out ban all gas powered garden equipment ASAP. Um, you know what? There are electric versions out there. They can be purchased. But you know, people are not gonna purchase them, especially gardeners are not gonna invest the additional capital to purchase them unless we force them to. So you know, the longer we let them use these air polluters that are so, so noisy, um, it's, it's, it's just you know, they're not, they're not gonna change until they have to change because of our rules. Um, and I also think that uh, it's not, the 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 gas, the gla- gas powered obviously had the additional problem of polluting the air. The electric ones, so they don't do that. But they can also be too loud. So I think the ordinance needs to consider the actual decibel level, not just whether it's gas powered or electric powered. Because I know my husband bought an electric powered one and he made sure that it was at the lower end of the decibel spectrum. And that's, again, we need to promote that because this is supposed to be a nice, quiet, bucolic setting. And people should be able to enjoy the outdoors, um, which I I really and truly can't now. I can't spend more than an hour on back without either, either a a leaf blower disturbing me or damn surveyor, which is another problem we should take up, but I'll leave that for now. Um, and I guess my, my um, one other thing I just wanted to mention is I think, I do think enforcement's gonna be an issue. And obviously, I think people are gonna try to get away with it. I think we're gonna have to have some kind of hotline where residents can call and say, you know, Joe Blow, Joe Blow across my back fence has a gardener there. And either he's there after hours when he's not supposed to be, or it's too loud or whatever. Because unless we can actually report it, we can't possibly get the police or anybody else to drive around trying to listen for the noise. That's not gonna happen. So there needs to be a way for um, citizens to report it and actually get someone to come out and verify that in fact, there is a violation and to cite the person. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jerry Lugers?
Mayor, with with your permission, if I could, um, I know we have a lot of people in the meeting tonight that all would like to make comments. And I would just encourage everybody to be mindful of the three minute time limit. I'm running a small timer. I try to send you a message when you get close, but just uh, if we could all be mindful. Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to say that I fully support banning the gas powered leaf blowers. When I go out in my yard for more than five hours uh, a week, I have to wear sound attenuation because the leaf blowers are so loud. In fact, I can hear them inside my house, which is well insulated with double pane windows. And I'd like to give kudos to Roll School, which recently changed from gas powered leaf blower, which I would hear at eight AM every morning, to an electric leaf blower, which I cannot hear. Thank you.
Carol Collins?
Uh, hi, I live on Deodora Drive and I do support the ordinance. Um, I actually think it's a huge improvement, a lot related to leaf blowers. I am a little bit disappointed that as a homeowner, I can't use, like, I can't clean my patio on the weekends. But I understand that is an enforcement issue, so I I support the the limitations that uh, the ordinance is proposing. Thank you for getting to this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Is there any other public comment on this matter? Uh, Carol, and then Barbara.
So I first would like to uh, compliment the council for running the survey and also for doing the test in Holbert Palmer Park. I think that was some important information. The survey showed to me that the town is actually fairly split on this issue. I'm opposed, as I commented at one of our prior city council meetings. I'm opposed for several reasons, for all, all the reasons that I don't, don't think the equipment is adequate right now. And I do feel that a number of manufacturers will be improving equipment before the state mandate in twenty twenty-four. So the equipment we buy today is not going to be as robust as the equipment and the batteries that are available a little bit later. Secondly, I think this pits us against our landscapers. So I have four properties in the area and I talked to the landscapers and I asked them how they felt. One will drop me completely because we're the only house he does in Atherton, but he does want to Redwood City for us. None of them were willing to buy the equipment. None of them are going to monitor spare the air days. And I am not going to be in a position where I have to go to the properties and tell them that they cannot blow or mow on a spare of the air day. I also feel that it it's really hurting those who are the most vulnerable to think that they're going to buy the equipment. They're not. So we're gonna be buying it. There's a fund that the state is putting together. It's forty million dollars. There'll be grants that are available for professionals that can tap into the fund, but we're a little bit early in terms of of having practices where people can apply. So I think if we wait just a little while, that there'll be more opportunity. Lastly, I'd like to say that there are two pieces of equipment that were in the proposal that are not available in a um, electric fashion. One was power washers and one was rototillers. I don't know if you're still considering that. So I called AAA where I rent a lot of equipment. I think our landscapers rent there too. They have no rototillers that are electric, none. They have one power washer and that power washer can only do windows. It cannot do patios and sidewalks, which I think a lot of people rent them for. I certainly do. So I would, I I think you need to distinguish between appliances or tools, uh, tools that are used a lot and those that are used occasionally. And perhaps carve out those where they're really not available in a rental fashion uh, for us. I'll leave my comments at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, I think Barbara was next.
I'm not normally a public speaker, but after talking to my gardener, I wanted to come and represent his point of view. Um, I'm concerned about the gardeners in our area who have a hard time living in this area as it is, without expenses going up. And according to him, the best battery operated leaf blowers cost fifteen hundred dollars for the battery. And the battery only lasts two and a half hours. So he would need at least two, you know, but probably three of those fifteen hundred dollar batteries to do a job in one day. He says if he can plug in and recharge it at one of his client's houses, you know, then maybe he'd get away with two of them. Um, but, and the other thing is the, these expensive batteries only last about two years and then you have to buy them all over again. Um, and they're not as good as the gas operated ones because it takes twice as long to blow and especially in the fall when the leaves are wet and heavy. Um, and of course, on our one acre Atherton properties, it's pretty hard to use electric, you know, with cord operated leaf blowers to get around an acre of property. But because of the extra cost of batteries and the time involved, he would need to increase his rates at least fifty percent for his clients. Um, I now pay about a thousand dollars a month to my gardener who does everything for me from uh, pruning to fertilizing. But he has a client in Palo Alto where they are not allowed to use the, these gas blowers. And he charges sixteen hundred dollars for a smaller property, um, because of the time and cost for him. So I just uh, wanted to make sure that Atherton residents are aware of these extra charges for, for the gardeners. And I, I think a letter should be sent out to every Atherton resident about it. Because I talked to at least twenty Atherton friends. None of them had heard about the issue. They all agreed that it would be a burden on their gardeners. And um, I know that my gardener is even having enough trouble now finding assistance to work for him because he says he can't pay people what they can make in construction. So if his expenses go up, he can even offer less to assistants and helpers. Um, so I just want to make sure that Atherton residents are aware of the impact uh, financially of of these new laws.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Uh, Emily? You're muted.
About that, thank you. Um, I'm speaking today both as an Atherton resident and as Chair of our town's Environmental Programs Committee to advocate for the outright ban of gas powered leaf blowers on residential properties in Atherton. I was surprised to see that the town's proposed gas powered leaf blower ban will only be instituted on weekends. This seems like an ineffective half measure in the face of the health risks and climate risks associated with pouring additional gas fumes into our lungs and into the atmosphere. I realize that the town sponsored a pilot program with electric blowers in Holbert Palmer Park and that the maintenance crew found them less efficient than gas powered blowers. But this is not a reason to discourage residents from switching to electric blowers. Residential properties are smaller than the park and therefore require less maintenance. Why couldn't the town have, for example, a gas powered leaf blower regulatory carve out for larger properties like the park, schools, clubs, and other multi-acre properties? Um, I also want to say that the burden for Um, I also want to say that the burden for purchasing the electric blowers doesn't need to be on gardeners. In fact, I don't think it should be on gardeners. I think the residents should buy them. Our family switched over to a battery powered electric leaf blower on our one acre property a few years ago. And our electric leaf blower is odor free, healthier and quieter than gas powered models. I just leave it plugged into charge in my garage. And my gardener uses it to clean both the hardscape and other areas each week. Um, I like that it's healthier and quieter for the wonderful people who take care of our garden and landscaping as well. If a privileged community like Atherton can't ask its residents to buy a le- electric leaf blowers, then what does that say about us? Residents in the most expensive zip code in America aren't willing to spend the ninety nine to two hundred dollars, which is the cost of an electric blower at Home Depot to reduce noise and air pollution for our children. Children who are already going to be forced to confront the climate crisis, crisis previous generations have saddled them with. As a mother of three, I'm extremely frustrated and disheartened that the town can't even take this one small step to improve our beleaguered environment. What's more, other towns have shown that it can be done. Portola Valley has banned gas powered leaf blowers outright last year. Les Altis banned them in nineteen ninety one. Palo Alto in two thousand and Los Gatos in twenty fourteen, and they all seem to have survived the transition. In fact, residents are reported to be enjoying less noise, quieter neighborhoods and fresher air. Additionally, our state has passed a law, which you referenced earlier, that will soon ba- ban the sale of gas powered leaf blowers anyway. And we could help our res- residents transition to an inevitable change by being trend setters rather than laggards. Most people around here that I know feel great desperation and despair over our climate crisis. We could help our residents feel a small sense of pride in making a simple lifestyle change that will benefit all of us. And I just want to note, um, we've referred to the noise, which is obviously a really big problem for residents. But leaf blowers generate wind speeds of a hundred and eighty miles per hour. And when they're spinning, they, they pick up all kinds of hazardous substances. And exposure to the dust clouds, I'm sure you've all been walking in your neighborhood when you walk right into a dust cloud, um, is very damaging to people's respiratory system. Um, gas powered leaf blowers emit air pollutants, including carbon monoxide, which contributes to ground level ozone, nitrous oxide, which contributes to smog, hydrocarbons, which can be carcinogenic, and nitrous oxides, which can cause acid rain. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I don't see any other public comment at the moment.
I saw one hand for Mr. Smith McKeithen. But he pulled it down.
You're, you're muted, Smith.
Am I muted still?
No, now you're good.
Okay, um, well, unlike the uh, the prior speaker Carol, I won't read to you my letter. Uh, she read the letter that's filed with you. I've, I've, I'll just make a couple of points. Um, the first is, I am disappointed that the environmental programs committee um, and the council haven't looked at the basic science involved with gas powered blowers. Um, I did my own research a year ago. Looking into the research that was then published by the environmental programs committee. And frankly, was shocked at what I found in the reports on which it relied. And I pointed that out in, in a memo to the council and in environmental programs committee. I got no response. And the same statements about two cycle engine versus four cycle engine um, are made again in the memos that underlie the actions that are before you. Uh, the fact is that two cycle engines um, are not nearly as environmentally adverse as the general population believes or is this figure tonight alleged. But that having been said, um, I, I think you, you have to look at what um, the, the townspeople themselves have said. You've got a, an equally split vote um, in the, in the, in the online poll that was sent around. Look at the letters that have been submitted to the council over, over the course of the last five days. And I think you'll see e- equally split, if not more opposed to this new regulation and in favor of the new regulation. And um, I think what uh, the town manager has suggested, it, which is to put off everything until the state actions take effect, is probably the most reasonable course of action. Um, if people want to, to go along with what the EPC um, says they think is a good thing to do, let them do their educational work and let individual homeowners make their own decisions. But I think cramming it down the throats of homeowners in this town is never a good policy.
Thank you, sir. Um, scanning the room, Mayor, and I don't see any other hands at this point.
Okay, um, so I'll bring it back to the council for any questions or comments. I, I, I have a question that uh, Smith referred to the fact that we've gotten a lot of letters in the last few days, which is absolutely true. Uh, and I know that uh, the last time I saw a total of, of the, you know, opinions that had come in, it was uh, pretty evenly balanced. At that point, it was like fifty three percent uh, in favor of the proposed ordinance and forty seven percent opposed, but I wonder if there's an update on that. If not, I, you know, it's, it's not, I'm not trying to put pressure on you to come up with it at the last minute. I'm just wondering if you have it.
I don't believe we totaled that up.
Uh, I have a question, which is, you know, the discussion tonight on both sides of the opinion here has almost a hundred percent been on leaf blowers. And the ordinance deals with gas powered garden equipment. Uh, Carol specifically referenced uh, some uh, which maybe characterizes garden equipment or maybe go be a little beyond garden equipment where there really aren't uh, electric alternatives available, at least in the rental market. Uh, and I have staff looked at the idea of dealing with this now just in terms of the leaf blowers versus all garden equipment. And I wonder.
That was actually the, the follow up suggestion that we let the state deal in twenty twenty four with the small gas powered equipment and that the town just address gas powered leaf blowers.
Okay, good. Okay, Diana.
I, I, yeah, I have a lot of things to say on this. First, on the spare the air days, nobody really said in this meeting why we're doing that. The reason for spare the air days is that um, after big fires, there's a whole bunch of pollution and toxic dust that settles on the ground. And when people come and blow it with their blow dryers that they're, excuse me, their uh, leaf blowers, they're circulating that in the air. So it's a particularly bad time to be using this piece of equipment. So I strongly support prohibiting any sort of leaf blower on spare the air days. Um, I personally think that we, uh, the, the restrictions that we have, I, I was behind the logic of kind of wanting to go into it slowly and drag people into it. But and originally I was on the committee that proposed this, but since thinking about it further, I think it doesn't go far enough. And I uh, think we should simplify it to ban gas entirely and, and make people move to the electric. And uh, there's, as Emily said, this has been in place in cities all around us. And they're all doing it. And in Portola Valley, everyone talks about their own. I'll talk about my own gardener. He has people in Portola Valley and all the residents there uh, buy their own batteries and they're plugged in outside their house and they just come and he, he is, he has just the equipment. As someone else mentioned, the state's going to come on with uh, with programs that money that's been set aside. Redwood City said money aside to allow gardeners to uh, you know, buy back programs or swap out programs. And there's been these across the country. Um, and uh, in the case of Redwood City, the mayor of Redwood City said that they were very concerned, sorry. They're very concerned that too many people would um, would come in and do it. And actually, they did not have too many people and they ended up with money left over. So I'm in favor of exploring all options for rebates for gardeners and a direct reach out to gardeners. And I'm also in favor of a direct reach out to residents and getting them to buy their own batteries and have them stored at their home. And this is happening and it's, other cities are able to do it. So I'm in favor of simplifying even more than what we did. The other last point, and someone also mentioned this already, is I think that when we ban outright the two strokes, I think we should have a DB level associated with that, as many other cities do. So we're going to ban uh, two stroke and things that are, that are above, I think the number seventy five DB. So I think we should add the DB to that ordinance. And um, there was something else I was going to say, but I'm not remembering because my cat distracted me. So I'll stop there for now. Oh, one last thing I did want to say is that I question, uh, Mr. Smith said he did his own research. But you can go to the cancer, the National Cancer Organization, you can go to all of the, you know, US air quality things. And these facts that we cited are from there. They're not from obscure sites. They're from real, you know, nationally regi- recognized sites. So we're not talking fake news there. So I just wanted to, to defend the people who did do the report and put those numbers in there. There are real numbers from reputable sources.
Okay, Bill.
Um, so first off, I'd like to address the cost of the batteries and the recharging units. And you know, the ones I have, um, you know, and I use it on an acre and a third here. Um, it's uh, it's like a hundred and sixty, less than two hundred dollars. It's not fifteen hundred dollars. So I, I think that maybe your gardener was, was mistaken. I worked with Diana on this, you know, the, the thought process was when we were just looking at gas leaf blowers. Um, was that, the way we would ease into it was we would have this Saturday prohibition and only residents can do it. And, and uh, they had to do it with electric. And that was to kind of give people the impetus to start moving forward and doing that. Uh, since that time and the result of the, the survey, um, you know, many, many people say, hey, I still have a gardener that comes on Saturday. It's the only day he can come. And uh, in my discussion, you know, with George is, I think he brought up too, was that why do something immediately now and then in six months or seven months later, then, then implement it? Let's just implement the gas blower uh, issue, you know, January one, twenty twenty three as opposed to this. With regards to all the other equipment, um, y'all are right that there are a number of uh, pieces of equipment that uh, do not have an electric companion yet. Uh, and some of them that do, do not have, are not very efficient. Uh, you know, I've personally tried to use an electric chainsaw. It just doesn't work. Um, the uh, when you want to go, when you go ahead and you um, read the ordinance that was put out by the state, where they listed all the different things they were putting a prohibition on, other than the gas uh, leaf blower. They were saying at, at a certain date or as changed. And the reason that they said that was because they were going to reevaluate the technology at that time. So I think it should just be the gas, the gas blowers. I think we should just say, okay, that's going to start in, in uh, twenty twenty three, not now. Um, and uh, and, and as was pointed out, there are rebate programs and I'll, I'll refer to the one in Redwood City. They, they thought that they were going to get, you know, hundreds of people asking for the rebate. And they ended up getting something like thirty two only. So the rebates are out there. People can go get them, uh, and they should go get them, but um, anyway, so I think that we should, you know, change a little bit as, as we discussed and, and uh, uh, I guess those are my comments. Thank you for listening.
Elizabeth. You're muted.
Um, uh, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, thank you um, for uh, everyone for their comments. So I think that uh, it makes a lot of sense to um, delay and uh, follow what the state is going to do in twenty three. Um, but I would really like us somehow to put something really strong on, on our books to prevent the blowing of the streetscape and the blowing of the three uh, poisons and particulate matter that up into the big clouds of, you know, debris, um, the right aways. Uh, and the noise is absolutely incredible. There, you know, I live around, I mean, there's houses all around. And there's always a gardener, I mean, every day of the week and sometimes twice a day. Um, there's just always, you know, leaf blowers and the gas leaf blowers are really the, the, you know, the noisiest. I bought my landscapers, I don't have an acre, I have a half acre, but and I, and I have prevented them from blowing the streetscape because not only does it blow up the, the, you know, for, there's so many people that walk uh, around with their little children in their uh, you know, strollers and bicyclists and, you know, they are spraying up the particulate matter. It's really, I think, a very hazardous situation. But I bought a leaf blower, electric, and they're just fine with it. And it's, it wasn't that expensive. And I think they even bought, went and bought their own, you know, a backup. So I, I just think it's something, an idea whose time has come and the technology will continue to grow. And it's not that cost prohibitive. And I think that um, you look around and our neighboring, very similar uh, communities to us have done this. And I feel that we're really behind the curve. So those are my feelings about it. I'd like to in- initiate some, some kind of ban on blowing the debris up in the street gate right away.
Uh, other, anyone, Bob, do you want to make a comment?
Well, I, I see the arguments on all sides. I mentioned to George at one point that some of these uh, environmental issues, noise issues, whatever, sometimes we're tilting at windmills. Um, in that i- in, it's kind of like, w- when we don't have enough water, they want us to cut back and kill all our vegetation, let our lawns die, even though we only use residential use of seven percent of all the water used in the state of California. So, uh, so I, I see both sides of the issue. We obviously are going to have to go towards all electric. I think, I, I, I feel right now this ordinance isn't quite ready for prime time. I think there's a lot more discussion. I don't think we're going to solve it tonight.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I think we need some more work. Uh, I, let, let me try to address a couple of different issues. One is Elizabeth's issue about concern of the streetscape. I think we best address that with the item that the subcommittee has included in here about banning any leaf blowers on spare the air day. And believe me, I am highly sensitive to what Carol Flaherty said. Uh, my gardener is not going to know it either. He's only going to know it if I say something to him. And let's face it, I'm going to say something to him when I'm aware of it, which is not all the time. So this is not going to be an easy thing to enforce. Uh, but I guess I do think that it's a, a good health provision. I just think it's going to be one of those provisions that doesn't get very enforced if, if I'm really honest about it. Uh, in, in terms of the issue of electric and gas blowers, I was first introduced to this issue uh, by the uh, executive director of BackMed, where he, his staff had done a very detailed report on uh, gas versus electric blowers. And uh, contrary to what Smith McKeithen said, it, they came out with a big analysis that two stroke engines were much more hazardous than four stroke engines. Uh, so I, I don't exactly know where the background came from, but I know that they did a big analysis on it and they published it. I am very sensitive to the issue of enforcement. I mean, while we can ban leaf blowers on spare the air days, I don't know how they're, how that's going to. I don't know how they're, how that's going to seriously be enforced. And how do you, how do you seriously enforce the difference between a two-stroke and a four-stroke gas engine? I I don't know how you enforce that either. Um, I do think that we want to encourage electric engines over gas engines. But I think if we're going to do that, we have to include in our ordinance some kind of a rebate program. I understand that Redwood City didn't expected a huge participation and got a small participation. I don't really care if it's huge or not, but I think if we're going to require that, then we have to offer up uh, a solution. And the closest I can think of getting is with some kind of a rebate. I agree that that the best thing is for residents uh, to buy uh, the batteries and have them available for their gardeners. But let's face it, that involves a level of coordination that A, we as a council absolutely don't have with our residents. I mean, most people don't even know this is an issue in front of us right now. Uh, and B, it it's a hard issue for us to enforce with our gardeners because frankly, we're not there all the time when the gardeners are there. And we're not talking to them about whether they're using leaf blowers or electric blowers. And of course, we can make an effort to do that, but the result is it's going to be very sparsely enforced, in my opinion. Uh, I don't think that takes away the importance of trying to address the issue, but I think we have to address it in a reasonable way, which I think has to require some kind of rebate. And and then we can encourage participation in that. Maybe we can even make it happen for our gardeners, for those of us that are aware of it. But I don't think that's a huge percentage of the Atherton residency. So I think where we come out here and and if somebody disagrees, please correct me. But I think where we come out here is that we need to do some more work on this before we are ready to approve it.
Through the chair, I do agree with you, that enforcement would be an an issue. But we instruct our gardeners, tell them the scope of work. I mean, they don't just, I mean, when we hire them and then we update them, we do planting us, you know, we walk the properties. We do planting schemes, we, you know, do pruning schemes and things periodically throughout. So you tell them, you know, this is the the the, these are new ordinance. You hand them a piece of paper that says, both in, you know, whatever language they speak, in English or whatever, and you instruct them and they will get the hang of it. So I just, I, you know, I just don't think that we're without any power to, you know, influence what they do and how they do it and when they do it. Okay? I really don't. And I think that, you know, I agree with you about the rebates or some other kind of carrot uh, to uh, in encourage our residents, even though, you know, we're the wealthiest, you know, city in the nation or whatever, whatever. But everybody is very cost-conscious. They don't want to, you know, and they have multiple houses and things like that. But, you know, it's it really, I don't think it's beyond our reach to do it. And I think we need to um, put it out there and people will step up.
And the reality is, is that we, there's quite a number of communities right around us that have already done it.
Absolutely. I mean, that that in itself, and for many years. I mean, it's not just like an idea whose time has come. And the state, I mean, we tend to just wait and then, you know, um, get on the bandwagon with the state does. Because then, you know, oh, we haven't made any decision. We're not going to, you know, ruffle any feathers by making the hard decision. The state, it's a state mandate, so well, we got to do it. I don't know. I'd like to be a little bit on the leading edge here a little bit. But I don't think the ordinance is ready to be signed tonight.
Right. We don't want to be on the bleeding edge, just the leading edge.
I like the leading, not bleeding. I don't, I don't like blood.
Bill?
Uh, so uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we table this uh, to come back to us at a future date with after done some more research and some thought process and possibly outreach. Because one of the things I did get from a number of residents was that, okay, well, I saw that you had the survey. The survey wasn't very detailed. It didn't have the the uh, the ordinance out there for us to read. And um, you know, it was kind of a surprise. So um, so I think that we need to, I think part of this ordinance was to have the PC start putting together information with regards to this. And I think that we actually should ask them to do that. Uh, and and then um, you know, at a date later, we can, we can discuss where we are. And by then, the state rebate for replacement of the equipment, which, you know, there is a substantial amount of money, which in our area will probably be handled by Sam Seda. Uh, you know, we'll have a little more specificity on how that will work. Okay, that's that's my proposal for motion.
I I second the motion. I I second the motion. However, I agree with Elizabeth. I don't think, I don't want to milk this for another year. I I'd like this to work on this, you know, and bring bring this back soon and move on. But I agree that it's not ready for primetime. Let's table it for now.
So you're seconding his motion?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, uh, and if anyone on the council wants to make a comment on it, you you can do so. I'll just say, I I would like to see when this gets turned around, that it includes a rebate proposal.
Yeah.
That we can then evaluate. Diana?
I also think we should, at where we do revisit it, that we look at each item that's been proposed and discuss them. So what kind of pushback are we getting on the spare the air days versus not? So we had different pushback within the council here, so we need to go to the next level on those. But I I have to say, I'm disappointed that we're still not able to make a decision on this.
I think we all are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The decision.
Let's face it, it's a complex issue and our residents are totally split on it.
Well.
It is, it's something, well, at least those that we've heard from are split. I mean, that's the reality. So we we need to look at it. And that doesn't mean we can't make hard decisions that people disagree with. We can. But I think we can improve what we've gotten from, what we put in front of us and that we set as an ordinance for our town. Uh, so can we take a roll call on that, please, Anthony?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Toledo?
I I move with, I agree, we should table the motion.
Table the item.
Table the item. Thank you.
I guess I agree with tabling it. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't call me.
I I did.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear you. Uh, I'm I'm going to agree with tabling it, but I agree with Bob that we, I'd like to see it come back sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Louis.
That's an amendment, you know. Yeah, me too. I, yes.
Councilmember Woodmer?
Yes, of course. I proposed it.
We amended it several times, Bill.
And the mayor is, and of course, too, right?
Yes, I I support it and I agree with the sentiment about bringing it back.
Well, I'll tell you, I would hate to write the minutes for this, huh, George?
Well, wait till the next one.
I I've got, I got plenty of comments and feedback. We can work with the subcommittee to take some next steps.
Thank you, George. Thank you.
Okay, um, the next item, I think it's a public hearing, involves an ordinance establishing regulations to implement Senate Bill nine.
Thank you. Lisa Costa-Sanders, Town Planner, and I'll be giving the presentation. Right. Um, so the item before you is an ordinance providing implementation of urban lot split and development under Senate Bill nine. State Senate Bill nine went into effect statewide on January first. These regulations are mandatory for all jurisdictions in the state of California. The Planning Commission and City Council had a joint study session on December first, where they reviewed the current regulations and provided staff with some direction. Planning staff, together with the City Attorney's Office, drafted the ordinance that you have before you, based on the council and commission feedback and in compliance with state law. The Planning Commission reviewed the ordinance at its January twenty-six meeting and voted to recommend that the City Council adopt. Any eligible parcels may apply for a lot split or add an additional unit using the provisions of SB nine as of January one. So the purpose of the ordinance is to provide a framework for evaluating SB nine applications, comply with the requirements of state law, and maintain the existing spirit and character of the town to the extent feasible. Eligible parcels may be split to create new parcels of approximately equal area under SB nine and the proposed ordinance. Each parcel shall be equal to, or at last, at least forty percent of the original lot area. Parcel shall be split approximately perpendicular to the contiguous property line to create somewhat equal property areas. And the front parcel line shall be the line closest to the public road that serves the parcel. We do allow allow flag lots in town and they need to have a minimum access area of twenty feet in width. Separate utility meters are required to be provided for each parcel. Um, and then the development that's permitted on each parcel would be the existing primary dwelling unit plus one SB nine unit or two SB nine units or a primary dwelling unit and an ADU unit. And we did clarify that all ADU units shall be considered as SB nine units under the provisions of the town ordinance. There's a maximum of two units on each parcel. So we've drafted the regulations in a manner to incentivize property owners to build homes in accordance with the current town development regulations. So if the dwelling unit complies with the current setbacks, the current floor area and height limits would apply. Alternatively, for developments that do not comply with the current setback requirements of the underlying zoning district or developments that retain the existing main residence and want to create one new SB nine dwelling unit, they would be limited to a maximum floor area of eight hundred square feet per dwelling unit, limited to a maximum height of sixteen feet for each dwelling unit. And then they could utilize the minimum state setback requirements for side and rear yards of four feet. It would still be required to comply with the town's front setback requirements. And so for the provisions of this code, ADU units are considered SB nine units and you would not follow the provisions of the town's ADU ordinance if you were to build a second unit on an SB nine parcel.
Lisa, before you leave that, can I ask you a question on that? Uh, on on the previous slide. So my question is on the first bullet point. Um, if a parcel is split and there and and they comply, the the homeowner complies with the our setback and floor area standards, uh, what, what are the limitations in terms of the SB nine unit that they would build on that property? Assuming they're building two units on the property. Would the SB nine unit not have a maximum of eight hundred square feet if they're complying with the setbacks?
So if they build two units that fully comply with the setback requirements, so they're within the main building area for the lot, then they would be able to comply with the maximum floor area for the property. If they built one main residence that complied with the setback requirements and the second dwelling unit was in, say, the back corner of the property, both units would be limited to that eight hundred square feet. So it really needs to comply with the setback requirements.
So wait, let me just, that that's exactly what I was going for. So just to clarify, it and and this, you you take, let's say, a one-acre parcel and you split it in, I I understand it can be twenty, forty, sixty, but say that it's approximately two half-acre parcels. And uh, then there are setback requirements for each of those new half-acre parcels. And those are the Atherton setback requirements. And if they comply with those, then uh, they could build within that uh, planning area or that building area, anything that qualifies with those setback requirements.
Yes.
But but if they move one of those properties out, so they, if they were to comply with what we currently have as our ADU requirements, which give a maximum of eight hundred square feet, if if they take advantage of the four-foot setback, then if I understand what you're saying is each of those two new units would have a maximum of eight hundred square feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Big deal. Great. That's, that's a big.
Yeah. So the goal is to have the new development be within the main building setbacks of the current underlying zoning district.
Got it. Okay.
And that's how we've changed, we've defined any second unit as being considered an SB nine unit and not following the provisions of the current ADU ordinance.
Yeah, I also have a question from Bill.
Yeah, so um, actually, there's two. So before they split the the yardage, do they have to have the utilities installed there?
Um, so there would be a process they would need to go through to do it a lot split that would need to follow the town subdivision regulations. Um, and so you would need to demolish any improvements that cross property lines. You could record a map and then you could lay the utilities. And then I believe the final map would get recorded and then you can construct the building improvements.
Okay, so you would have to have PG&E and, you know, whatever, you know, the water company has got to have the box there, right?
Yeah, and you would need to abandon any utilities that kind of cross the property line as well, right? So they may need to do a new utility run if they're retaining the existing residence and then a new utility run to the new parcel.
Okay, and then second question was very similar to Rick's. I thought that we said that an ADU, if it's uses the ten-foot setback, can be up to a thousand square feet as, and it only if it went back to only a four-foot setback, then it was eight hundred.
Right. So separately, our ADU ordinance, you are correct, that if you comply with the accessory structure setback of ten feet, then you could have a twelve-hundred-square-foot ADU that would be considered exempt from floor area. Because the purpose of the ADU ordinance was to really encourage development. So we wanted to see new ADU production in order to achieve our regional housing need allocation goals. Um, and so the incentive was to move it from the four feet to ten feet by giving the additional square footage. Seeing that there's a little bit of a conflict between the ADU ordinance and the SB nine ordinance with the relation to setbacks and floor area exemptions, we've decided to completely separate those. So if you're under the SB nine ordinance, you've done a lot split in compliance with SB nine, any new units you build are considered SB nine units and need to comply with the floor area and the setbacks as laid out in this ordinance. You would not separately follow that code section that regulates ADUs.
Good, thanks.
So I have a clarification.
But 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 Lisa, unless you were to build them within the building footprint, uh, the normal setback footprint, then they're not limited to the eight hundred. The SB nine unit isn't limited to the eight hundred if you can fit two units in that footprint.
You could build two larger units if you were to max out the floor area that's allowed for the property. Yes, within those setbacks. Yes.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
So I'm just going to, I'm just going to uh, do some square footage. So you, if you have an acre property and you split it in half, you know, for instance, you would have about thirty-six hundred square feet floor area in a half acre. Is that about right? Uh, for each, for each.
Sounds about right.
That's about right.
I can look it up if you keep talking.
No, but I I I know that because it's like my, you know, my part. But then you you do your house and then you have your garage and maybe a little pool house on that half acre, right? Would you be able to do that?
That would be the, with the total floor area of the property. You could have a detached accessory structure in a main dwelling that all comply with the current setbacks. Yes.
And would you be able to make that detached structure an ADU?
No, it has to be an SB nine unit.
It has to be an SB nine.
If you're doing the lot split, we're calling it an SB nine unit.
I see. Yes. Okay, so that puts, this is very strong and it's it's sensible. But, I mean, you can do it, but you wouldn't be able to build your thirty-six hundred square foot main building house and then a couple of accessory structures on the property as ADUs, right?
I I want to clarify, you, so I just.
I want to clarify, you, so I just want to clarify one thing, Councilmember Lewis. The SB nine unit can be a primary dwelling or it can be an ADU. The reason, however, we keep referring to it as an SB nine unit is because we want to make crystal clear that if you're processing an application pursuant to Senate Bill nine, that the that the requirements set forth in the ordinance before you are what apply, not the separate ones in the ADU to ADU ordinance that are in a very different chapter of the zoning code.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. That makes sense, okay.
Okay.
But effectively, you could put, you know, two houses, about thirty six hundred square feet on each half acre of a lot split acre.
Provided that they're complying with the town's setbacks.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Was there another question?
Yeah, that's good. Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if you have two SB nine units that are in the main dwelling area and they're attached, we just have requirements that you have a solid one hour firewall and a deed restriction would be reported against the property that one unit would be a rental unit and then the property would be under ownership. So, you you couldn't have like a condo situation where there's two units are separately owned on one property. And then we've applied some additional requirements for these multi-unit developments on the property in addition to the current screen location for the storage. Thing, ensure that transformer, backflow preventers, generators and other equipment are also screened from the public right of way and that exterior building and lighting directed downward shielded light source and be designed so the light is not directed off site as well as no uplighting of trees and permanent lighting within trees. And then parcels that use the provision of SB nine are not eligible for future lot splits. So, we would have deed restrictions to make sure future property owners were aware of that. Same with adjacent property owners. So, if somebody owned two properties, they could only do the lot split on one of those and not the other, and that's in compliance with SB nine. And then, as I indicated, they with the ownership unit and then also they must maintain one of the units as a primary residence for at least three years, and that would be a deed restriction. Do you want me to pause for questions now?
Yeah, I've got a comment, actually.
Go ahead. Hold your comment, let's.
Well, okay, well, it's, okay, so questions. I asked this question to George and he responded, but I just want to go over it. It, a person can do the SB nine split of a property and then live in the property but not build anything on the other lot. And he could live there for for three years and then he could build and then not live at either of those locations, isn't that right?
Yes.
So, so this, okay, so it'd be a little bit of an inconvenience, but the, and when I was at the League of Cities, we reviewed this, you know, the attorney said, you know, no, this is their comment, no district attorney is going to prosecute somebody for not living in the house for three years. So, you know, I, you know, I I'm not going to hang my hat on this three year thing because there's lots of ways around it.
Mr. Weiner. The properties would nevertheless be subject to the town's code enforcement if we wanted to proceed with that.
Diana has a question.
So, we're just doing questions now. I do have a statement because one of the items seems like it doesn't belong here. The uplighting, I don't understand how uplighting and lighting and trees got thrown into this. That doesn't seem to be related to what we're talking about here. So, that I was surprised to see that and I'm curious why we would pick that item to go in here. What was the thinking behind that?
Certainly. So, these are actually some items that we are considering for future code amendments to the town because we do get several complaints relating to landscape lighting being bright and spilling over onto neighboring properties. So, as you see properties further develop and with lot splits and smaller parcels, I think this is an area of concern that we want to make sure that we kind of maintain that the darkness in the evening that we have in the town and we not have excessive lighting in the community. Right now, we have a requirement that accessory dwelling units and accessory structures have lighting that's shielded and downlit because those structures are closer to adjacent property owners than the main residence. So, we felt it was appropriate to carry that over here where you could have reduced setbacks. I'll just go on to the next item then, I think. The study session with the Planning Commission City Council, there was kind of a conversation of, well, how many of these do we expect to see? And I know there's been some fiscal analysis that says probably very few, but we're estimating about five a year and we're doing a study through our consultants on the Housing Element Update to see if maybe we can increase that number. And that's mostly relating to the lot splits. So, that would result in forty new units towards the town's Rena requirement over that eight year period. Also, it seems that SB nine would be more likely to occur on properties with an older residence where it was easier to demo that building and then split the lot. So, we ran a little analysis and found that there's six hundred and six parcels in town greater than an acre with the main residence built before nineteen seventy and six hundred and eighty seven with the main residence built before nineteen eighty. And, you know, there could be even more. We didn't run it on less than an acre lot. It seems. Am I muted?
No, you're okay.
You're okay now.
It said that somebody muted me, so maybe I'm talking too long. But I think for the town of Atherton, the most financially viable option is for single family homeowners probably maintain, you know, split the lot and have two single family homes rather than construct the kind of duplex scenario. So, that concludes our presentation.
So, so did you?
Sorry.
Did you do the analysis on, you know, I think we brought this up at the housing study session. But, for example, most of Lindenwood is an Atherton acre, which is about point nine of an acre. So, so I know you said an acre or more, but did you do the analysis on the Atherton acres?
Did not. So, I'd have, we'd have to have our consultant run that again for smaller lots. Yeah.
That's a good point, Bill, because that was going to raise that because I raised that before and, you know, I don't, you know, the Atherton acre is point nine two. And that's the most, that's most what we have. So, we need to make sure our ordinance reflects that.
Okay, so this was reviewed by the Planning Commission as indicated, they did recommend that the city council introduce the ordinance. I'd be happy to try to answer any additional questions you have as well. I really appreciate the assistance from the city attorney in drafting this ordinance and interpreting the state law.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, some members of the council? I don't see any. Is there any public comment on this matter? Carol?
I'm not very well versed on this, so I I could be speaking out of school tonight, but, you know, we're a builder in town and we're getting ready to start a new house on Adam Way. But we also build a lot of homes in Idaho. We have ten that are going on there right now. And I am concerned about, you know, some developers who might come in and take advantage of this situation. And I I think that there is a potential for having some duplexes that will diminish the value of the adjacent properties, and that is a real problem. So, what we do in Idaho is that we, I don't personally build duplexes there, but I know builders who do, and they have a design where they don't look like a duplex. And so, I think that the town should consider perhaps some building codes where houses are designed consistent with the neighborhood. And the reason I'm a little sensitive to this is I have one of the most god awful houses in town built across from my own house that is by a very famous architect, but it doesn't mean that he has taste. Totally inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. And so, I I just think if you're going to put duplexes in, then there there needs to be some restrictions that it still look like a single family home, and that can be done in the design phase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We we all know your issue, Carol.
We're ready for the tour.
And we all know we don't have architectural review and that's why you have that issue.
Yeah.
But, okay. I guess there's, there's a valid question there, Lisa, which is without architectural review in general in Atherton, could we, could there be some architectural requirements to SB nine units?
No, no. The town could adopt objective design standards that would apply to all residential development. And then Mona, sorry, you're no.
No, that's exactly right. It can, we can't limit it to SB nine units. So, whatever objective standard we have on residential housing has to be applicable to SB nine. We can, however, have independent standards for duplexes, but again, that would have to be something that's generally applicable and not limited to SB nine.
That works. Okay. Is there any other public comment? Jerry Lugers?
Yes. Lisa mentioned that that after a lot split, it would have to have a normal setback. What what is a normal setback? I know for where I live, it's sixty feet for the front and rear. And I was wondering what it's going to be if it's a half acre lot. So, if a lot is split into two lots and it's now a half acre, what is the setback?
Does the mayor want me to respond to all comments?
Please respond, Lisa.
Okay. So, we have a sliding scale for setbacks that vary based on the lot width. And so, for a two hundred foot lot width, the setback would be fifty feet. And then, as the lot gets smaller, the setbacks would reduce. I'm trying to see if I have an example handy. Yeah, I don't, I'd have to look up our table for the setback requirements. But it's kind of very based on the width of the lot.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Emily Khan?
Thank you. I just have a question regarding the three year rule and the previous comment that it was difficult to enforce. Won't that lead to people just who don't live there just splitting lots and flipping them? And if that's the case, is it not possible to put in sort of a fine to discourage that kind of behavior?
Who?
I'll defer to the city attorney.
I can respond to that, Mayor DeGolia. Violations of the town's ordinances are subject to code enforcement and administrative citations. And so, this would be an example where we would be able to find a property owner for violating our SB nine ordinance.
Well, I think that the question, Mona, was that somebody has the the property and then they split it and then they sell both of them off.
So, the, that would be difficult because they're supposed to have, they're supposed to record a restrictive deed, which clouds title and alerts the prospective purchaser from understanding that this couldn't happen. So, that's the safeguard from from that happening in the first place. But the more, I think, common concern is that a property owner, does the SB nine application splits their property and rather than having it be owner occupied on the other side, they rent it to a third party? And in so doing, we could use our code enforcement and administrative citations to curb that sort of behavior.
Okay, great. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for comments from members of the council.
I'll make a comment.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
I just want to say, I think you guys, Lisa and staff are doing a really, really thoughtful job for Atherton in trying to set up some guidelines that are complying with the spirit of the SB nine law and not trying to, you know, skirt around the issue and get us in trouble somehow while attempting to maintain the character of our town. And I know at our study session, we talked about, you had made a presentation about some zoning areas. I assume that that may be coming back to us.
Yes, so we're going to have a follow up study session on the Housing Element Update strategies on February twenty fourth, three P M.
Because just the SB nine format is not going to help us reach our goal.
Correct, but I I am optimistic that, I don't know if that's the right word, from a Rena perspective, that we can plan for additional units and our consultant is doing some further study on that.
Yeah.
Just on the lot split situations, not on duplex construction.
I'm kind of surprised about the numbers of housing that you total those up, there's like twelve hundred, you know, older structures that could be torn down. I thought that. Left them all out.
I just wanted to say this SB nine, you know, obviously none of us want to have this and here we have it and what we're going to contend with. But I think that Atherton in particular has to tread carefully on what we put in our public rules. We just saw what happened in Woodside, which was embarrassing for them. And I think that the comment on the three year thing, on a lot of cities are proposing that that you have to live in for three years to to thwart speculators. And I I think even if it's not that enforceable, it's one of the few tools that other people are using. I think that the uplighting one, I felt like an orange. I didn't know how that got thrown in there. And again, I don't think that we should put other stuff in that. If we believe in that, let's address it, let's talk about it, but I don't think it belongs in this. And I think this will be scrutinized because we're Atherton. Some of the things other cities are doing is to require that the houses go to the, I don't know, something about low income rentals. So, we've had no discussion of that, not that we have any low income people dying to rent here, but that was something that other cities are doing. So, we're, we, I think we should look closely to what other cities are doing that's working and sticking that that gives us control because what we really want, in my view, is that in order to apply, to comply with Rena, we want to control the way that we develop all those houses. So, we get those three hundred houses and keep the the character. This took all control from us doing that. And so, everyone, it can, development can happen all over the city. So, I am in favor of us more sooner rather than later going back to looking at rezoning certain areas and controlling how the development is done. And some of the ideas we had about, like encouraging development along the the borders of the town that are already a dense housing as opposed to letting people split lots in the middle. I realize that we don't have that control anymore, but I guess just a few of the things in this troubled me, which was the uplighting. And I I think there was another one, too. But anyway, I'll I'll stop there.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, in the last page of the staff, page five of the staff report, there's a bold thing at the top that I discussed with George about kind of trying to incorporate into the ordinance, a good neighbor policy to encourage people not to go to four foot setbacks, to not do things that are out of character with what we've done in the past. And I'd like to see something like that incorporated into the ordinance. I think it could be a big deal. I mean, when, when people ignore that, you know, there's, that's not good. It's not good for them and their neighbors aren't going to like it and so on. They ought to know it upfront. So, some, some bold additions of specifying what the good neighbor policy is, which basically refers to our old. which basically refers to our old setbacks, et cetera, screening. We're not talking about screen, it's apparently another ordinance, but I think it should be added.
Okay.
Can I ask a question real quick? The whole intention of saying of allowing people to do bigger spaces if they use our setbacks is encouraging people to go by our rules as opposed to the SB nine, is that correct? So if they go by our rules, they can build a bigger thing. I think that's brilliant. I haven't heard anyone else, other cities do that. I think that's a great idea. I wonder if, and I have to assume that Mona knows that if that's allowed. Because they're setting their rules, we can't go against their rules.
It is, so we have to comply with the requirements set forth in Senate Bill nine. And Senate Bill nine says that the units have to be at least 800 square feet. We're allowing that. And we're saying that as long as you comply with all of the requirements, including the smaller setbacks, you can build an 800 square foot residence or SB nine unit in Atherton. However, we are incentivizing property owners to do the bigger one. I would just be cautious of taking any actions that seem like we are discouraging compliance with SB nine in the form of the minimum thresholds of the 800 square foot. Again, we can't discourage that, but we can encourage bigger setbacks equals bigger dwelling units.
Right, and that could be built into the good neighbor paragraph or part of the ordinance.
What we talked about, Bob, was adding a section under the purpose of the ordinance that kind of articulates exactly what you're talking about and tells the readers of the ordinance that, hey, you know, if you want a bigger house, you've got to comply with the setbacks, that's the incentive. But the ordinance itself encourages that.
Yeah. So let me make a couple of comments and I have a question. But overall, I think what Elizabeth said is exactly right. I think, Lisa, that you and your staff have done an excellent job here. If I, and it's more than I understood when I first read it, this is pretty subtle. But if I understand it, we are 100% complying with the intent of the state legislature to allow duplexes. In our case, if they're going to build the duplexes and it's going to go out of the normal setback requirements, it's going to be a maximum of 800 square feet. That's absolutely doable, we're supporting that. But let's face it, we know from all of the builders that what people want in this town is not 800 square feet. People want bigger properties, not smaller properties. People are expanding the footprint of their properties, they're not shrinking them. So how much this happens, we'll see. I think the estimate of five a year is probably pretty good. I can imagine that we know that there are some properties in town where families have kind of built a compound. That could happen with SB nine. And they could be satisfied with the 800 square feet or if they're within the setback requirements, it could be larger. I think that complies and I think that protects us. I do think that the issue that's left open is if people do build those duplexes, which they're allowed to do, what do they look like? And I think that's something we should think about. We have never been in favor of architectural review and I'm not generally in favor of it. I think that if somebody can afford to buy into our town, they can build what they want, even if we hate it when it's across the street from us. But, but I think it's a different situation if we're going to see duplexes built. And maybe we can have a code, and this is not applying to SB nine in specific, it's applying to duplexes in general throughout the town. We can look at that. And I know we're going to be discussing this more with the arena assessments because we're not yet at the full compliance with these additional 40 units. My question is this, Lisa, one of the bullet points that you have says that a flag lot shall have a minimum of 20 feet in width. Well, how, so does that mean the current flag lots can't be subdivided into SB nine units? Because most current flag lots have a driveway width and I don't think they're 40 feet.
Yeah, that's a great point. They would have to have that dedicated access. And so without that, I don't see a way that those flag lots existing could be divided unless Mona disagrees somehow. Because they would not have the independent access to the public roadway.
Yeah, they'd need a 40 foot strip.
Yeah, so they'd need to acquire that, acquire it from an adjacent property somewhere.
They can always do that, but, but it makes it more difficult for flag lots.
For existing flag lots, you can create a new flag lot, yes.
Yeah, okay, Bill has his hand up.
Yeah, so, so first off, I think that you've done a good job, Lisa, with trying to, you know, put a fence around things. I do believe, not just with duplexes, but with, you know, as we were discussing items next week on Thursday, you know, based on where we were last time, where there was some discussion of having so many units on a, on a one acre lot that would be like a condo unit. I do think that we need to get into some sort of review. And so, you know, I'd like to see at least the duplex discussion, since that's very pertinent to this, you know, written in. But, but I do think that we need to spend some time thinking about making sure things are fitting into the neighborhoods. Other than that, I was disappointed to see that the mountain lions didn't get addressed here.
So for developments that involve two or more units, you cannot have discretionary design reviews. So we could not have, say, an architecture review body.
No, I understand, I understand. It's got to be for everything.
Yeah, so we could develop the objective design guidelines, that's correct.
Yes, and it's not to include in this, well, we can still adopt this ordinance, that it's a follow-on item.
That's correct.
Okay, are there any other comments? Seems like we're commented out. I think I need a motion to approve the ordinance. So move.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Can we do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, Councilmember. Polito.
No.
Councilmember Hawkins.
I don't like it with the uplights in it. I would, with some of the stuff out of it, I would vote yes, I guess I'm voting no.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Widmer.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes. Okay.
Can I say one thing about, I just, I'm sorry. Diana, I think that we've got this like landscape ordinance where, you know, we don't like uplights. And I don't think it's just specific to this situation. I know that I remember Phil Lively and all the, you know, ordinances, you know, and it has, everything has to be shielded and downlit. They don't want a lot of uplights going, and so it's not just specific to this, is my opinion.
So I don't think it should be in this document, is my opinion, because this is going to be very highly scrutinized, just as our other neighboring cities have been scrutinized. And I don't think uplighting belongs in SB nine ordinance. It belongs somewhere else, if that's what we want to do or if we already have it. I just don't think it should be in there and I think that, so I'm uncomfortable with that.
Maybe, maybe we could say in accordance with the landscaping ordinance.
Well, if we have that, I don't know.
But then you should point to all of the landscaping ordinances, like.
I think, I think the issue here is we're treating SB nine lot splits as something very specific within our code. So in order to treat them that specifically, we need to have those objective standards written into this ordinance that applies specifically to them, even if they're consistent with other sections of our code.
Yeah, I think it's fine the way it is. I don't think we're going to be scrutinized for that at all. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We're moving on to item number 18, which is approval of 2022 Earth Day Event Work Plan and Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I know there's somebody from the Environmental Programs Committee who's waited online this evening to make a presentation or speak to the council. But just in short, the 2022 event is a two-part Earth Day celebration. The EPC will sponsor a special Earth Day edition of the Athertonian Print Newsletter that would be released in advance of the event. The special issue is going to focus on environmental issues with various contributory writers. The Earth Day Festival would be held on Saturday, April 23rd, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM with an outdoor, family-friendly, community event at the park, featuring speakers, a vendor fair, EV and e-bike showcases, family-friendly activities, music and more. Attachment, the very well-written attachment one from the EPC member provides a summary of the contributors to the Athertonian Newsletter as well as a list of the proposed speakers and vendor fair participants. That concludes the staff portion of the report. And I know that Stacy's on the line, Mr. Mayor, to speak in addition.
Great, okay, we'll recognize you, Stacy.
Hi, well, I'm assuming everyone's read it, so I'm not going to do a huge summary because it's almost 9:00. But I will say, since I did the written memo, a couple of things have changed. We did confirm that Rob Jackson from Stanford Woods Institute can speak at our event and he is the author of the most recent study about the impact of gas stoves with emissions and indoor air quality. It made a bunch of headlines last month, so we're pretty excited that we got him locked in. We've also secured a donation of Impossible Burger patties for the event, so we got some free food. And we also secured the UC Master Gardeners Program. They are both going to write articles for our Athertonian and they're going to table at our event. They're going to do a kids' pollinator fairy garden potting station with a bunch of educational materials with it. And we are also being considered by the Bike Silicon Valley Group to potentially bring a bunch of e-bikes. And then for our EVs showcase, we have confirmed Lucid Air Mercedes and Rivian to showcase their cars. Or Rivian is through someone who owns it, not the actual company, just to be clear. But it's looking like we're going to have a lot of really good stuff. You guys have any questions for me?
Question? Anyone have a question? Okay, no questions. Is there any public comment on this? I don't see any public comment.
Nor do I.
Comments from members of the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the $5,000.
Second.
Okay, Elizabeth?
My comment was Stacy and EPC gals and guys and, you know, Doug, Kim and all, yeah, I think you guys did a really good job putting together the presentation and putting your budget together and getting some donations and stuff. And so this is very exciting. And so I'm glad you're going to have it on April 23rd. Wow, I mean, it's pretty darn close to the day.
Diana?
I just want to invite some of the council members. We need people to cook burgers, we need people to come and attend. And if you have an electric vehicle, then we'd like to invite you to come and show it.
I can flip burgers.
Well, let me expand that. I saw that you were going to do test drives of the e-bikes. And I'm glad to hear that you've got three EVs that people can test drive or at least look at. I'm not sure if it's test drive, but, but I, when EVs first came out, when they were offered as test drives at certain public events, this is well before the pandemic, those were very hot events because people weren't familiar with them. And I know Peninsula Clean Energy staged a number of those. There are now many more models of EVs coming out, some of which I'm sure Atherton residents would be really interested in checking out if they were in one convenient place. I know Volvo has a new car that's now out in the market and there's several others, so.
Yeah, we're not done with our outreach, so it's going to get bigger.
Good, I think it's good. And I think, I think we don't just want people to bring their vehicles. It's fine if that's the way we get them. But you need to be able to publicize which vehicles are going to be there. That's going to get people's interest.
Yeah, yeah, I know Lucid and Mercedes are both from the dealerships. The Rivian is a private individual. Everyone keeps requesting the Rivian, so we've been very focused on getting that car. I've also, we have some people willing to show their car at next year's Earth Day because we have been doing some dealership outreach and they just don't have cars available by our event. So we're on the hunt, definitely.
Bill, and then Diana.
Yeah, so this is, I guess, for either George or Mona or both. If people are test driving the e-bikes and they happen to get hurt, are we responsible for that?
We will have insurance for the event as a town event and we could probably have some sort of limited liability form of some kind or something like that, Mona, that they would sign before they do that.
I would recommend that, yes.
Hey, that's what I thought.
So we have a motion in a second and I'll take a roll call and just throw my, my vote for getting that Silverado here because I'd like to test drive that. Councilmember Polito.
Yes.
Hawkins.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Widmer.
Yes.
Mayor DeGolia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item 19, which is an all-electric reach code ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before I turn it over to Mike Greenley, our building official, and I believe there's someone here from Valencia Clean Energy as well, and we have public comment. This is a proposal, not an introduction of an ordinance that would come at a future meeting, but it's looking for council feedback on a proposed reach code for new construction only with some limited exceptions, which the council can expand or contract, and some EV charging requirements as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike for any staff report as well as potential clean energy.
Thank you, George. Yeah, so staff is seeking input and feedback from council on this all-electric reach code ordinance with exceptions and the EV charging ordinances. I have Rafael Reyes is with us from PCE and he's going to be here to help answer any questions that council may have. So with that said, we're ready for the questions.
Okay. Are there, does anyone have a question? Bill?
Yeah, so on page five of the staff report, you have this colored chart. I just didn't really know how to interpret it.
Rafael, are you available to answer that one?
Sorry, I'm pulling up the staff reports now. I was anticipating there might be an opening presentation, one moment.
Page five. It's the colored chart with residential, non-residential and both. It has all the different exemptions on it, kind of hard to interpret.
Yeah, it was totally unintelligible.
Yeah, I apologize, this chart is a little bit difficult to read. The, the horizontal axis where the numbers are, indicate the number of agencies that have adopted this kind of exception. And if you look at the vertical axis, it'll show you types of exceptions. So from the top, for example, exceptions to ADUs. There are approximately 12 cities, that's the dark green, that have adopted comprehensive exceptions for ADUs in relation to the all-electric code. And the light green indicates some kind of partial exception or under certain conditions. So this applies then to each of the exceptions listed. So exceptions for cooking and fireplaces, as you can see, about seven cities have adopted exceptions for cooking and fireplaces that are under all circumstances. And another approximately five cities that have adopted some partial exemptions and so forth. So this is meant to give a flavor of the range of exceptions and how many agencies have adopted that kind of exception. agencies have adopted that kind of exception. So what you'll see is cooking in non-residential and code feasibility are the two most common types of exemptions that have been adopted by agencies in the reach codes.
This is with regards to all the cities and towns in California?
This is in relation to 36 cities. It's not comprehensive. There have been more adopters since this chart was produced.
But it's a state number or is it just a county?
It's a state number.
So can I just ask a quick question? So the very bottom, the 05101525, what is that grid? What does that denote? I thought that was the number of cities or the number of calculations.
That's correct. That's correct.
Well, but it doesn't match because if there's 30, it says 36 cities. Where's the 36?
So the 36 relates to the total survey of cities with reach codes and the range of exemptions that have been adopted and how many for each type of exception. And again, I realize this chart is a little bit complicated. Again, the bars indicate how many cities have adopted that specific kind of exemption.
And you gauge that by the numbers on the bottom?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
I have a, Diane, go ahead.
Yes, in January of next year, so less than a year from now, a new set of rules are going to come out, and in those rules, they address ventilation on gas stoves. And that becomes really poignant, given all the new research that's been revealed about how the gas the gas stoves are leaking continually and that they pose a big health hazard. So that's going to come in in less than a year. We don't have any discussion at all in this about adding ventilation, and the other item that we don't have a discussion of is solar. Neither of those, and those are going to come in in less than a year, so I'm wondering why they were not talked about at all in our discussion here.
Thank you for the question. Maybe I can explain how the reach codes relate to the state codes. You are correct that in January 2023, the new state codes will come into effect. The state codes establish the baseline that all cities are required to adopt. And the reach codes are enhancements on top of the state code. So the discussions here, should the town wish to move forward with reach codes, would most likely or most appropriately be to look at enhancements to the forthcoming state code. So all of the elements of the state code that you mentioned, so the added ventilation and other components will be there. And then this memo discusses elements or approaches associated with the code enhancement or what's known as reach codes. So, for example, on solar, there are already significant requirements on solar for single-family homes, which are, of course, the most common construction in Atherton. And so those are not repeated in the reach codes because those are already part of the state code. Hopefully that helps.
What about the ventilation thing? Do our current codes meet that ventilation? Because if someone builds a brand-new house now, that house is going to be in place for 30 years. If we now know that they should have greater ventilation, shouldn't we move that up in our own reach code?
Well, there's perhaps a question of timing, which I understand in your question, and that is that you know, at what point should Atherton adopt reach codes? And there is a three-year cycle for the new building codes from the state. And it is most convenient for developers and, of course, staff if the reach codes are adopted at the same time that the new state code is adopted. And that process is about to start here this year, and most cities will adopt their new building codes in the September, October timeframe typically. So from the standpoint of simplicity for the town, you may want to time your reach code adoption to coincide with the new state building code. And then that would take effect in January, and then everybody would be working from the same page, so to speak.
But there's nothing we're proposing that's not already coming in January or let me just ask that question. Is there anything we're proposing that's not already coming in January anyway?
Well,
Yes.
The reach codes do go above the 2022 state codes that are coming. So so, for example, you know, on buildings, having all-electric buildings is a step above the state code. And so again, the state provides the foundation, and then the reach codes are enhancements on top of that foundation.
Okay, so I have a follow-on question to that. Are the ordinance that's attached to the staff report reach codes reaching beyond the 22 code, which will go into effect January 23? Or are they codes that reach beyond the 2019 code that is currently in effect?
Well, the codes listed here, and this includes, I'm you know, looking at the materials here, includes cost-effectiveness studies and elements from the last code cycle, which is appropriate because not all of the details of, for the new code cycle are yet available. And so the codes, the model codes that are listed here are the current, or the 2019 cycle. So the model codes for the 2022 cycle are, have not yet been produced. Actually, that's not exactly right. A couple of the model codes have been produced, but the packet here has the 2019 model codes.
So if we were to adopt this, this would be modifying the codes that are currently in effect. It would be reaching beyond the 2019 codes that are currently in effect. And if I understand it right, because energy code amendments expire at the end of the building cycle, and these reach codes are an amendment to the building code that we have previously approved, these will expire at the end of this year.
If the adoption, right, is adoption of code that takes effect this year, yes, then new codes would need to be adopted for the next code cycle.
So, okay, but so I'm confused. Are you saying we could adopt these effective January 1st? And then they'll be effective the next code cycle, but these are codes that are structured off the 2019 code, not off the 2022 code?
Yes, I apologize. I'm not being clear. In theory, the council could adopt, let's say, let's pretend today, and say that these codes will take effect on March 1st. Theoretically, it is within the council's powers to do so. And some cities have adopted reach codes mid-cycle, but usually with more lead time. You typically want to give developers
And architects.
That's right. So we would, at this stage of the game, given the proximity of the new code, our recommendation would be to adopt in the next code cycle with the forthcoming model codes, not these that you have in your packet.
Right.
That said, the new model codes that are under development right now are quite similar to the model codes that you have in your packet. They have been adapted slightly to account for the changes in the state code, but fundamentally, the concepts are the same. So all-electric buildings, the fundamental concepts are the same, and the EV charging concepts are very, very similar. So as a study session, from a timing standpoint, the council may wish to have a conversation about direction, and then that could inform staff in terms of how they look at the model codes that will be coming out shortly.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Just a clarifying question again, because I think I heard you say that, but I was reading something distracted. So that the 20 23 codes from the state, right, typically come out like in September or so?
They will come out sooner, but the adoption process by local governments is typically August, September, October in that timeframe, so.
If we would wait until August to see what those actually are from the state, and then if we want to reach above those, make that decision in August, September, and then have them go into effect, you know, next in the 23 year.
Basically, yes. From a timing standpoint, the specifics of the state code are pretty well-known at this point. And the basic building blocks, if you will, on the reach codes are also well-understood. So the council could start a process so that there's plenty of time for staff if there's some refinements that are desired, particular exceptions in particular. The council could certainly start that discussion at any time and then have the details of specific model codes perhaps available in the summer and ready for final review and adoption by the time the building codes are typically adopted. That's scheduled that we've seen other cities take up. Of course, you know, staff may wish to comment on the timing here. But that's typically an effective way of scheduling this.
I think we're kind of, you know, ahead of the game here to discuss all this. I would rather just table this and maybe have another, you know.
I think you could probably provide some direction to staff with respect to exceptions. And so that when we do bring this back, we have that clarity and can move that consistently forward. Like Rafael's mentioning, with the adoption of the new energy code for 2023.
Also, I think if we give staff some direction, that that'll be available to the public, and people can respond to that before we've actually implemented that, which will give people an ability to respond to something that, you know, we're thinking about, so it's not just totally up in the air and put off.
Right. It can be brought up at the Builders Roundtable and
And should be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Bob, did you want to say something?
Well, basically, you guys both just said it. The point is the new codes are going to generate slight variations in these reach codes. And we're not trying to adopt the final one right now, Elizabeth. We're trying to decide direction. And so I, and the choices are pretty clear right now. So I think we could we can either pursue it now or we can table it because it's probably almost midnight. And I don't know how much conversation it's going to require, but we're not going to adopt something right now.
No, but we're gonna start pushing the can down the street, you know, I mean, you know, with direction to staff, so. Ready to.
No, I'm saying just the opposite. I think the purpose of this was to not push the can down the street and to say, even though there's going to be slight variations on what the state requires in 2022, staff is looking for some direction on our thinking right now because.
That's right.
I think I may, I must have moved the ball along, not kicked the can. Metaphor.
Okay, okay. So Diana.
Something? I brought this up about the January, but let me clarify that you can go online and get a list of what they're, what's going to be in it. That's already out. They had meetings already in December on it, so it's not a big mystery. It's not going to be a huge thing. The only two items that are on there that are not in our own thing, so we're not doing anything that's contrary to what's coming. That's not what I was implying. But the two things are ventilation and solar, and we've had no discussion of those. So I was just saying, since those are coming, we should be more alerted to those, and I think it's not a bad thing to start putting things out earlier because if it's coming anyway and you're building something, I think you should know. So I don't like it when we're always, you know, I feel like we do tend to kick the can down the road, thinking that people are going to not want it, and I don't know that that's, I question that assumption.
Okay, there are two different general areas here that are addressed. One is building appliance electrification, and the other is electric vehicle charging infrastructure. We can address each of those, give some direction to staff, and then we can come back and deal with this in a timely manner so it'll go into effect at the same time as the code goes into effect in 2023. Bill?
Yeah, I mean, I could summarize real quick. What I would I be interested in telling staff is it?
Deal with it in terms of the building appliance electrification and the vehicle charging separately.
But I think that there are two different areas, at least in my mind. One is the primary residents that, say, Carroll and Pacific Peninsula Group build, you know, for the larger homes, and then there are the ADUs. I personally think the ADUs could be 100% electrified, but the other homes I can see having some exceptions, such as fireplaces, the stoves, as well as the barbecues, the pool heaters and the spa pumps, those things.
Okay. Yeah, so before I take comments from the council, since we're past the question period, let me just take any public comment that is out there.
I know Carol would like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Carol.
All right, I'm chomping at the bit. So first of all, Mike, I thought it was a great report. All 340-some pages, which I did not read all of it, but in talking about exceptions tonight, before I start that, let me just say that I don't attend a lot of the council meetings, but I am so impressed by each one of you, by the depth and the breadth of your knowledge and the thoughtfulness of your comments. And I've been in town long enough to know that we have not always had city councils that were as collegial and cordial as you all are. It really is nice to see. So thank you for the huge amount of time that you put into this. Huge. So back to the comment then. In talking about exceptions, you know, we've built, we're starting our 22nd house in town, and we are working on plans right now with an architect for a house on Adam Way. So this is a very timely conversation for me as I'm working with that architect. But some of the things that people really, really like, I think you have to separate between items that are heavy use and not so heavy use, that would not have great impact if we had an exception for it. One is the fire pit. People really like gas fire pits, fire pits. The second is the gas grill. Not everybody is cooking dinner every night on the gas grill. So I think that's an important one. The fireplace is very important. But the pool heater, I called Adam's pool yesterday. We've built three pools with them. I said, how realistic is it to have an electric heater for the pool? They told me not at all. They said it would take an unbelievable amount of time to heat a pool with an electric heater, that it's just not practical today, and our pools tend to be large. So I can't, and they couldn't even tell me, you know, how long it would take, but it was a lot longer than anybody would want, and the cost would really, really be high. So the pool heater is one that I think also needs some thought. And I'll leave it at that. You know, people obviously like their gas dryers, the ADU. I don't have any problem with the ADU being all-electric. Even guest houses, all-electric, no problem with that. But some of these ones that people don't use that often, but they really like them, I think should be considered for an exception. Thank you.
Can I comment on that, Mayor?
Well, we're in public comment.
I just want to answer what she was saying. Can I? I just want to share a piece of information because I had the same concern about the pools, and I 100% agree with everything you just said. I did ask about the pools myself because I have not, I don't know if I have electric one or what I even have, to be honest with you. But the Menlo Spark Organization sent me a whole link with all the newest newest, and there's a lot of stuff I didn't know, you're a builder, so I'm sure you know. But they were, she had a whole list of electric pool pumps and a whole feasibility study on them. So there is a whole bunch of new stuff that I personally have never seen, I. I myself feel the same way about having the fireplace and everything you mentioned, so I went and looked at, well. If we cut out the fireplace, then we don't, you know, we'd have to do electric fireplaces, and I I didn't even know what that would be. But I will say, I looked that up today because, you know, and they they've also come a long way, and they actually look pretty darn real, but I'm still not ready to give up my fireplace either. So I think what we've taken is a very conservative approach where the carve-outs are the things that I think Atherton care about, like, you know, the cook stove, the fireplace. Although I'm torn because I know we need to get off the gas. And then when you build a house now, that house is there for thirty years, so we are, you know, so it's it's hard, it's hard. So sorry, I just want to share the facts on the pool stuff, because it's out there, I'll share it with you if you're interested.
Okay, Stacy, you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, so on the pool equipment, I've been talking to an expert about electrifying my house, and he said that the pool equipment, there's new stuff being announced this summer, so no one should buy anything right now. FYI, because they're supposed to be incredible starting next year, so that's my hot tip on that one. Um, I would say, I mean, I've written the whole memo for the EPC. I feel very strongly that ADUs should be all electric, they're much smaller buildings, the impact on the air quality of gas appliances is much more significant in the smaller structures. So they should definitely be all electric. And then for gas stoves, there's been a lot of research recently about the impact on the home, on the climate, that they are leaking methane at all times. And there are really beautiful induction stoves available, so that should be something that we should be taking seriously. And then I think just generally in terms of timing, I would love for this not to have a leaf blower treatment in that we can deal with this this year. So that it can be in effect next year as soon as possible, given how much, we just had a whole SB nine discussion, there's a lot of construction. Anticipated for the town, so I would like to see the reach code considered and finalized in time for all of that construction to take place in the town.
Okay, thank you. Is is there any other public comment?
It's getting me here, and I don't see any.
Okay, I don't either, so I'll bring it back. So let let let's just try to run through this both on the building appliance issue. And the EV charging infrastructure, and the purpose here is to give staff direction. On what we think, so what your opinions are as to what you think, and and I I like the way that Bill broke out ADUs, I think that's appropriate to do. Diana, we'll go first.
I'll 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 step through, I feel very strongly that ADU should be all electric for all the reasons that we mentioned. I think we're taking a very conservative points by saying brand-new houses. Within giving the exceptions that we pick, now I would, I might morally, I'd like to be not even doing that, because that means we're allowing gas lines to be laid in. But I think at this moment, since these exceptions can be revisited more frequently, I think we should go with what we have, but with, but maybe stronger on the ADU. I think the EV's plan that we have is excellent, I'm really thrilled by that, we have two that are ready. And I I like that because Atherton has so many electric cars, and anyone building a new house should have it ready, it should be ready, not capable, but ready. And we went a step farther by adding a second EV level one capable. And I think I'm I'm patting us on the back for that, and I don't think there'll be any resident pushback on that at all, so. That's where it's going, you can look at the numbers, you can look at how many cars are going electric in our city, I think that's great, so. I guess that was it on my opinions for that, so I'm stronger on the ADU, I'm in favor of what we have for main houses with exceptions, and I think the EV is still a.
Okay, let's focus on the electrical appliances, Bill.
Yeah, so I think the the stove cooktops, as well as the barbecue, since they're both cooktops. I think that they should be exception, as well as the pool heaters should be an exception. And, you know, I have a comment on the the charging stations, I I I think there should be two required. Two twenty charging stations installed. Not not one and one, there should be two. If if you've ever tried to charge a car on the one fifteen, it takes all night and then some. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Okay, so I'll start with the cars, I agree that, you know, to for new construction. You're going to need to have at least one fully capable, and it would be better to have two fully capable, the two twenty. I'm not talking about the Tesla supercharging type of, you know, power, but the two twenty. But, you know, you could also just get the 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 one ten or whatever, the regular, because when we had our first Volt. Plugged it in, and the Prius, I plug it in, right, so I think that there are still some cars that maybe don't require the two twenty, so. I'm kind of iffy about that, but I think two ready, in a, you know, two to three car garages is really important. So for the cars, and then I think all ADU should be all, you know, glass top, electric. Or not necessarily glass top, but all electric appliances. And I agree that induction stoves are really cool, and I know people that have put them in, they're big houses, and they're loving them. But I I haven't, I've looked at them, I'm not sure I haven't played around with them, but. It would be nice to phase out the gas Wolf and Viking ranges, but I'm not ready to give them yet, but.
Okay.
With other things, the the pool heaters, I don't know, I don't use my pool heater, I think it's expensive, even if it is gas. I think you, it's way expensive and it takes forever and ever to heat it, and I don't know how many people. Heat their pool all the time, you can get a black cover, you know, and have it solar heated and recircle recycle. Recirculate your water, that's what we do, and it's in the summer, it's warm all the time, it's perfectly heated. Swimming, though I'm not sure about that, but gas grills, gas fire pits, yeah, I love it, keep that as an exception.
Okay. Bob, did you want to comment?
Well. I I definitely rule out natural gas prohibition and the all-electric energy code requirement. All-electric preferred would be my direction. And and the exceptions we're talking about with gas cooking. Gas pool heating, et cetera, I think those are the appropriate exceptions, we definitely need exceptions. I I heat my pool with solar and, but every once my spa, I have to eat with with a heater. And so. It's not practical to do it the other way, the last house I built in San Jose this this past year. They had an ADU in a house with two electric, all-electric heaters, instantaneous heat. You can't believe the amount of energy they require. Eighty amps on the main house, three phase is what they wanted, of course, you can't get three phase, so. At at two forty volts, and and then the ADU required, I think, a sixty amp, one hundred and twenty volt breaker. So we're we're kind of pushing the, burning the fossil fuels over to the power plants where allegedly it's more efficient, but. Heating a pool, a spa, and some of these other things with electricity instead of gas is just not ready for prime time.
Diana?
I thought she's already done.
In our current, in our current, what we have in front of us, we carve out cooking, fireplaces, and generators. So the so pools are not currently carved out. I think that I would like to see staff take a look at the materials that were provided to us, which was a study on pool efficiency. Before we make a decision on pool heaters, that would be adding something to what we already have here as another exception. We, nobody said anything about generators yet, I I don't know a lot about them, I would like to be the reason. I'd like us to not be adding more gas lines that are run out into backyards for both earthquakes and getting off fossil fuels. But the problem with the with the gas jet, with the generators. Is that you can't even buy a Tesla wall right now unless you, if you wanted to buy it as a standalone. And as a generator, just as an emergency generator, you can't get your hands on them. There's such demand for them, and they go first to people who are putting in whole solar roofs. So I think that one has to be in there as an exception, at least right now. And maybe we'll be able to take that out when the availability of the other ones becomes more. And on the pool heaters, I think we should do more study on that, because there, we didn't have those resources before, so it was just sent to us yesterday by Menlo Spark, so. Oh, one other thing I wanted to mention, it's brilliant in here, in whether, which is requiring that everything be, even if you go in and put a gas stove in your house. You have to provide space and power for it to transition to electric, and I think that is absolutely brilliant. Because that means we're set up for replacements already, so even if we're not giving up our Vikings now. We will, we will be able to do it the second they start advertising their, because they, the same people make the induction stoves. But they haven't quite advertised it in the US yet, but once we're we're requiring people to have it, the setup so that you can switch over. And I really want to applaud that as an item that's in here.
I think that's in the state, it's going to be in the state.
It's going to be required.
In the state, in the state, so we shouldn't be putting it in.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
It's in the state mandate.
I think I think he's referring, you're referring to generators, Vice Mayor?
No, no, she, she says she was talking about the 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 dual. Putting a gas line in and an electric line into the same location for, so you could swap out items, and I said that that was going to be in the state.
The basic energy code, yes.
Basic code for twenty twenty-three.
Well, yes, we're going to get it, so I know, so you're saying it's not in ours, that's the one that's coming on in January?
Yeah, that's the state code.
So we don't have acquirement requirements for electric in our current document?
No. That's not a reach code. So let me give my thoughts on this, you know, when we built the town center, which is the biggest project we've ever done in our history. We didn't include a gas line, it it is actually remarkable that we built this building without natural gas being connected to any building. I I mean, I I think that's going to stand out for us in the future. But I've got to say, building a town center is really different than living in a residence. It's a different experience, and there are things that you want in a residence that you're not going to want in a town center. And and I do think that it's appropriate for us in new construction. Once the new code comes in, because I really think we need to give developers and architects time to. Gather the change, I think it's appropriate to have our space heating and our water heating be electric. I don't think it's appropriate to not have any gas coming into our homes, we we want gas, we want it for. Barbecues, we want it for fire pits, we want it for. Pool heaters, I don't think there's an option for pool heaters, I must say, for a spa, there is an option, I have an electric powered spa. And I have had that for twenty years. My my spa's always been electric, and it gets really hot. And it, you know, it uses electricity, I know, I I can see the difference on my bill, because I know exactly when it comes on. But I don't think it's a lot more expensive than gas would be.
How fast is the heat?
It heats, it heats a degree every fifteen minutes. No, every five minutes, one degree every five minutes.
Whoa, that's hard to believe.
Yeah, that's right, I, believe me, I I test it every night. One degree every five minutes, but it's it's only a three hundred gallon spa, it's not huge. Okay, um.
Yeah, but we were talking about pools.
No, I understand, a pool is a totally different thing, I I think we need to have an exception for gas pool heaters, because I don't think. That electric pool heater is is in prime time if it's in available at all.
Right.
Gas dryers, I I don't know the issue of gas dryers, I I I'd want more information on that. I don't think people particularly care whether their dryer is gas or electric. I I I think they'll care if it's a lot more expensive, if it's if it's electric. I think people care about their cooking stove, and while I'd like to have an induction stove, I think it would be fun to have. I I know there's people that want gas stoves, and I respect that and would honor that. And I know people want gas fire pits and and gas barbecues and gas fireplaces, so those should be exceptions. On on the vehicle charging. I actually felt fine with the proposed single-family dwelling of one EV ready level one circuit and one. EV ready level two circuit, or it could, you could have a charging station. I mean, that that could be an option that would replace the level two circuit. There are cars that. Charge sufficiently with a one twenty, I I have a Volt, it charges with one twenty, but. My wife has a Polestar, and there's no way it can satisfactorily charge with one twenty, it it needs two forty. So I I think at a minimum, we should have one EV ready level one circuit and one EV ready level two circuit. And that sounds like that's reach code right now from what's anticipated for twenty twenty-three, so I think that's good. And I think the proposal for the ADUs in the staff report is excellent. I I also think the proposal for the non-residential housing, which for us, of course, is schools and the circus club. It is ten percent of the parking spaces with charging stations. I'm sure that, you know, Peninsula Clean Energy is in the process. Of building out three thousand six hundred charging stations in San Mateo County. So they they would, could help with that. I thought the staff report in general on the charging was well recommended, so. Are there any other comments from anyone else? I think that's in pretty good direction, George.
Mike, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Diana, did you want to make one more comment?
I did, I just wanted to say that we have experts in all of these things that we've been recommended are based on expert reports. And so we can talk about our own pools and our own, you know, what our own personal experience, but we really do need to rely. All these things have been actually studied, they've done feasibility studies and all of that, so. I will, in in terms of adding the pool, I think we need to go defer to the experts on the pool heaters. All the other things are all known quantities, and they've been researched.
Okay, so let's move on and deal with item number twenty, and we'll defer twenty-one to March study session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we got Robert body and PCE again for this particular item. And hopefully we can move through the staff portion of the presentation fairly quickly. Robert?
All right, well, thank you, thank you, George, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, there's been a long desire to have solar at the town center initiated with the initial project design. And when it wasn't cost feasible to implement, the buildings were plonked to be solar ready, and we started looking at a PPA. PCE has started a process in which they are aggreg, looking to aggregate solar at. PCE has started a process in which they are aggreg, looking to aggregate solar at municipal facilities. We've had a few meetings with them about opportunities to implement solar here at the town center. Attached to the staff report is a potential layout option showing arrays along the rooftop of the civic center building as well as the ancillary building and canopies at the parking along the Caltrain station. In speaking with Caltrain, they have not expressed any objection to our installation there, just more related to how the work would be done as opposed to it physically being there. And so as George mentioned, we have Rafael Reyes and David Freibusch from PCE. There's a short presentation that they have and PC and I are available to answer any questions that may come up. So with that, Anthony, can you pull up the slide deck?
While they're doing that, Rafael, one of the questions that came up was, is there a kilowatt target for the town center? So once Anthony gets that presentation up, if that could be one of the things you address as well.
Yes, we'll, we'll speak to that. And I'm realizing I didn't properly introduce myself with the last item, but Rafael Reyes, I'm Director of Energy Programs for Peninsula Clean Energy and the, both the reach codes and our solar program are within my team as well as all of our electrification efforts, generally decarbonization efforts. And I see slides are coming up. We're, we're pleased to provide this opportunity to the council with regards to solar on the town center. Just as most of the council, I believe, is familiar with Peninsula Clean Energy, but we're your energy service provider for San Mateo County. And actually, we can go to the next slide. And for those who are unfamiliar with Peninsula Clean Energy, we provide the Energy Generation Service, which is delivered on the poles and wires, if you will, that PG&E still continues to own and operate. And that delivers the greener and less expensive energy than the alternatives. And we have a mission to reduce greenhouse gases by expanding access to sustainable and affordable energy solutions. And residents and businesses in our service territory have saved approximately $18 million a year through, through this service. And we're happy here to talk about one of the, another one of our programs, which is an opportunity for you and my colleague here, Dave Freibusch, to speak to the details. Step forward, Dave, to take it forward from here.
Sure. Thanks. Good evening, council members. I'll move expeditiously through this presentation. As I know it's late, but certainly if there are questions, we can go back into the, into the details a little further. Next slide, please. So the program that we're doing throughout our service territory right now is we're looking at local government facilities. So city, the cities within our jurisdiction as well as the county. And we're looking at how can we help, how, help our partners get more solar and when it works, solar plus storage deployed. Because we want to help, we want to help our customers reduce their energy costs as well as hedge against rising rates. We want to help with sustainability goals. We have our own goals of 20 megawatts of distributed generation in the, in our territory by 2025. And we want to develop a reproducible program. And this is a pilot program that we're doing right now. And so we've been looking at a number of sites and we've added on, as Robert said, we've added on the town center site recently sort of towards the tail end of our, our project acquisition. And we've been working with McCallman Engineering, which is a firm that we brought on to do all the sites we've been looking at. And they're the ones that have done the recent analysis of the, the town center. Next slide, please. So what we've done at every site is we've gone out in person, walked, walked the site. We've developed a sizing, a preliminary plan based on what we believe we can get. Our general approach is to maximize the amount of solar we can get in a, you know, physically on the site. And then we'll also look at facility load because we have, we are constrained by the annual, the annual usage of the facility is about as much solar as we can, we can put on. And so then we'll generally iterate with facility staff and come up with a final plan that includes the layout, the sizing of the system. We'll do a solar production analysis as well as some technical documentation. And we're in the process of aggregating these all into a portfolio of projects to then go out to the market and, and bid. And the idea being that, you know, all these sites are relatively small in the grand scheme of, of solar, you know, commercial solar product, solar procurement. But if we can aggregate everyone together, we're, our hypothesis is we've done a lot of this, this work of developing the sites, already doing some of this preliminary work, reducing the costs and difficulty for the vendors to do it as well as bringing some economies of scale by, by bundling these projects together. And so we're hoping that's gonna drive down costs for, for everybody that's part of this portfolio. Next slide, please. So the, a new model that we're, that we're exploring is, is, is that we would be the entity with which the, each individual facility and the customer would sign a power purchase agreement. So basically a fixed price dollar per kilowatt hour over this, over the course of the 20 years is generally what the term would be. And that we would have that, so the contract would be with us for the power purchase as opposed to with a third party. And then we would have the contract on the other side to get the equipment, to have the installation done and to manage the operations and maintenance. And so the benefit we see this providing is we're basically taking this work out of the hands, off the plates of the, of the cities. And because it's, it's a, you know, it's a lot of time and effort to, to do this for any given site. And so we're taking that on, onto our plate. You know, we have the expertise in the, in the energy space. And, you know, we're aligned, I think, or, you know, in terms of the, the types of things that we want to see, such as prevailing, prevailing wage work and, and other, you know, attributes that would, would comply with your procurement requirements in general. Next slide, please. So I know that this project has had several looks. The most recent one, I believe, was Sage. And, you know, everyone has a slightly different layout. You know, again, we're looking to be consistent across our portfolio of projects. So we're, we're using McCallman. They've gone in and, and done this analysis, which shows solar on the, the main building here. The rectangles obviously indicate where the solar would go. On this auxiliary building across the, where the police garages are and then on the land across the, that's Caltrain, the Caltrain owned land, but where the, where that's parking that, that the town center has access to. And so the total kilowatts that we could, we see being able to fit. And, you know, as, as I'm sure you're, you're aware, there's a lot of trees around there, there's shading issues. That's why the library is not included in this, in this design because I think the shading was just gonna be pretty impactful in terms of whether the economics of the project. And so this is about half carport, half on the, on the roof. We don't have the load data because it's, you know, one, it's a new facility and we've had some issues getting the contractor to get us the, the right meter information. So we're, we're running that down, but even if we had it, the, the site's not fully occupied. So it would have a, you know, margin of error. So we are, we, we expect that we could, we could effectively put the 200 kilowatts of solar on the site and the site load would be large enough. But just as, as a, you know, caveat, if it turns out that the site load is less than the production of this, of 200 kilowatts over a year, we would probably have to scale down the system. If there's gonna be EV charging added in the future that you're pretty confident on, maybe we just assume that that's gonna come online and that will increase the load. So we can stick with it. But I think, you know, 200 kilowatts for a size, this site is a pretty reason, you know, seems like it should be pretty reasonable for that to happen. Next slide, please. So a couple notes that are, you know, specific to this site. So you have the, the clay tile roof. That generally requires some special procedures where the tiles where the solar is gonna be deployed have to be removed, removed and then replaced. It does add some costs. It's not necessarily a deal killing cost, but just want to flag that as, that will, you know, slightly reduce the savings that we would expect that, that solar to generate. We understand that in the past, there have been some aesthetic concerns about the solar on the, on the main building. I think we would want, you know, clarity on whether those, those still exist. And for, you know, to be clear, we, we think the solar on the main roof makes a lot of sense. I mean, it's that, that gets probably the most exposure of any of, you know, solar exposure of any of the, the areas that are there. So, you know, we are, we advocate for doing it, but we just want to also make sure that we're aware of any roadblocks that might be on that front. And then with regard to the, the area that's Caltrain property, you know, I know that Robert has been diligently working with Caltrain staff and has gotten, you know, a clear indication that they don't have any objections to the land being used for solar. We, I, I think on our side, we just don't, wouldn't want to be in the position of having to have, to negotiate with Caltrain, that we would want the town to essentially take care of that. And if, you know, if for whatever reason, Caltrain in 10 years decides, hey, we want to do something with that land, we want the solar down. You know, that would have to then be the, the town's responsibility to, to either, you know, move the panels or, or whatever needs to be done, that it would be, you know, the town, town would be taking on that, that responsibility. Next slide, please. So this is estimated solar production approximately. So basically if the, if these panels show up and I'm assuming you're a B10 rate, which I have a high, fairly high level of confidence that's probably right, that we would expect if those panels, if that system showed up tomorrow at the site and it was, the site was using, you know, its full load, that we, that it would save $50,000 in energy bills in year one. But that doesn't account for the cost of the equipment, which we'll get to in a second. The other thing is if this is a B10 rate, there would be some demand charge savings as well. Demand, the energy here, energy is dollar, is the kilowatt hour. That's the, the volumetric aspect of how much energy you use. Commercial buildings also can have a demand rate, which is a pay, which is also an additional fee based on the maximum power that you draw. As long as the solar is coincident with the highest use of the building, highest energy use, which is probably likely for a, you know, a commercial building that's open during the day, then we would expect to have some additional demand save, charge savings, which would be in the probably 10% additional range. Next slide, please. So just to look a little more closely at the numbers here. So, you know, again, the, the, the plan that we're looking at would be a, a no upfront cost. So it's a power purchase agreement. You just pay for the kilowatt hours coming off of the, the system. And then that is reducing the, the electric bill that you wouldn't, you would normally have paid. So there's, there's no upfront cost. You don't, you're not owning the system. You don't have a responsibility to maintain it. That's all, that's all on us. But what, what is coming out of that savings is paying for the equipment. We're amortizing the cost of the equipment into the, into the, this PPA. And so we would expect that if this, the estimated savings were 50,000, I had 50,000 on the last slide, 49, but in the 50,000 range and about another 10-ish percent. So say $53,000 this system would, would save. We would expect, but we don't know, we would go out to RFP and that's, this number here is to be determined. But let's just say, this is a general estimate based on, you know, talking to several firms to get a sense of where pricing is. We would expect the, the cost of the equipment to be about 39,000. We have a small penny kilowatt hour charge that we're contemplating for our side to cover our costs of, of managing this, of managing the contractors moving forward. All the work we've done to date, we, we're not wrapping in, we're not looking to recoup the, the money that we've spent with McCallman Engineering on all this. This is, we see this as a, you know, a pilot endeavor. That's part of our programmatic work. But then the net savings in this case in year one would be $11,000. And I have an escalation analysis on the next slide, which we'll get to in a second, which shows, you know, the fact that you can't just look at year one, you have to look over the course of the system because this would be zero escalation rate. Perhaps 1% we're allowing for, but we're, our target's 0%. But utility rates, you know, have been going up 5% a year. So that over the course of the life of the system, that can, can really add up. And then after year 20, we are looking at the town would be able to own the system. And since the life of these systems is usually longer than 20 years, you would then get the full value of the savings after that point. Again, 20-year life, the equipment costs, we still have to determine. And this NEM revision, some of you may be aware that the, the net energy metering tariff, there was recently a proposed decision by PUC that would have significantly reduced the value that behind the meter systems can capture. That is currently on hold, so we're not actually expecting it to necessarily impact this portfolio. But we still believe time is of the essence to get this through, get these projects through before that decision comes down. Next slide, please. So again, just looking at the escalation. So if, if we had to do a 1% escalation on the PPA versus 5% escalation in utility rates, and that's not a number we're pulling out of the air. I mean, that PG&E is actually on record saying that they're expecting 5% increases for the, you know, for the coming years. So, you know, over the course of a system, your 11,000 doesn't look necessarily that significant in year one, but over 20 years, it's a pretty high value project. And certainly a key thing driving it is there isn't actually an upfront, an upfront cost that the city has to, has to incur for that. Next slide, please. So again, this is a portfolio. These, all of these cities, as well as the county, have approved their respective facilities. We're also looking at a few, a couple of sites in Los Banos, which is a new, is gonna be entering our service territory in April. So we have asked all of the, these, these entities and we're, we'll be asking you as well for what Rafael likes to call a what-if commitment. We're basically saying, we want, we want you to authorize the, your city staff to move forward with the PPA. If we can come back after an RFP and offer, offer you a net, you know, a net savings. And you obviously also can see other benefits, the community benefits, sustainability benefits and, and value those. But the reason why we're looking for that is, you know, again, we see that there's economies of scale in, in bundling these together. If we go out to RFP and get pricing based on a portfolio and then half the sites drop out for whatever reason, not only does that impact, you know, the sites that dropped out, it also means that everybody in that portfolio probably has, has their systems repriced at that point. And so, you know, we're really looking for a clear commitment that you want to move forward if we can come back with a PPA that, that will save you money. Next slide. So, you know, we're looking to, you know, identify the key questions here. You know, we would definitely want to confirm an interest in proceeding. You know, there've been, as I mentioned, there's, we understand there've been issues with the solar on the roof. So we really just want clarity on whether that is a, is a, is an issue still or, you know, if, if that's not an issue. And then, you know, just the clarity on the Caltrain land aspect. You know, we are, this is the tail end of our process here. We, we hadn't actually intended to include this site, so we were kind of getting it in at the end. So we do want to move expeditiously, you know, as expeditiously as possible in terms of getting a commitment. But, you know, we understand that there's your own processes you need, you need to work through. I'm gonna just quickly turn it back to Rafael in case I've missed something or you want to add something.
Thank you, Dave. As Dave noted, we are looking for what we are calling a yes-if commitment. There is some time sensitivity here. As, as you may have noted, other agencies have already confirmed their desire to participate. And we are rapidly moving towards executing the RFP for the project. But we would love to include afternoon in that process if at all possible.
Okay, great. Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, so thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation. You show, I've got a couple of questions. You show a buildup of how many kilowatt hours we should be able to get out of the, the panels that you're proposing over a period of time. So if, if in fact, your, your winter analysis shows that we're adequate with all the number of panels that you're putting on there, what, at what rate are you planning on selling back the, the excess generation? Because my understanding is by law or by the PUC, we get it only for 10 cents a do, a kilowatt hour.
Well, current, currently, you would, um, so, you know, a couple of things. With the commercial system, a lot of the generation happens during the time when you're actually using the building and the facility. So it would off, first of all, it'll offset, you know, the the current usage of the building. Under NEM 2, uh, which words the current, uh, NEM rules, the the exported, the the exported energy will effectively be compensated at your utility rate up until your total generation of. So let's say the building uses 100, you know, 200,000 kilowatt hours in a year. If the solar generates 200,000 kil, 200,000 kilowatt hours, then your compensation would be at your utility rate. But if you go over that, if you, if you over-export, then there is very little value to that, which is why it's important that we don't exceed, if we, when we put the system out, that we don't want to exceed the annual generation, uh, the annual usage of the, of the site.
But if I, but if I understood what, what you'd said in your presentation, of course, you had that little chart there with the winter and summer, which it was very difficult to read. But, you know, you, you said we've sized it for the, what we think you're gonna need. Well, you're putting so many solar panels on the building and on the, on the carports to to meet all the needs in January and December, which is the lowest solar time of the year. And, and so it, you know, it's twice that in, in, uh, June and July. And so there's a substantial amount of extra solar. That's, that's question one. Question two is, if I look at what your generation is from the different locations on the, on the civic center, you know, some are substantially higher than others. And what, you know, why would we do that? Why would we put those, uh, in those low generating areas as opposed to in the more sun, you know, westerly facing sunny areas? So there's two questions.
Okay, so for the, so the, for the first, that, that bell curve, and and we can go back if you need to. It was just basically to show you what the solar production would be from that resource. It's not at all looking at what's the building use, usage. So yes, in, in January, the system's gonna generate a lot less energy than it does in August. But we're looking over the course of a, of a, of a calendar year, how much energy does the system generate versus how much energy does the building use? As long as this, as long as we don't put a system that's so big that is generating more energy that over the, over the, accounting for a full calendar year, we're, we're not exceeding that, the, the usage, then you are, the, the solar is, is basically offsetting that you at your full utility rate. So that you mentioned 10 cents, and I'm just, I'm not sure where that 10 cents came from, but it wouldn't, it would be at your utility rate, you'd be offset, you, you're basically credited back for the, the energy that, that your solar produced, as long as we don't exceed the overall usage of the building over the course of the year.
Dave, a couple of quick comments here. And Peninsula Clean Energy also offers a 1 cent premium above the retail rate, so it's, it's above the PG&E, uh, credit rate. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, David, but we, this, the system as, as proposed here has been sized to be what would likely be the maximum size based on anticipated load, which is a little bit speculative, because we don't have the energy data.
In, in this case, actually, we, we started with this, how much solar can we get on this site? That's, how much solar can we get on this site that is gonna produce a reasonable amount of solar that we believe it will be an economic project? So everything that's there, the carport, the, the, um, the main building and that ancillary building, we expect the solar production to be, to be, to be pretty good there, to be sufficient. Uh, and that, and it's been designed with that in mind. At all the sites we've looked at, our first step was how much solar can we get on the site? That was the first one, and that's what we've done here. The second piece is, how much load is there at the building? So we start with the maximum amount of solar we could potentially put, then we look at the load and we say, all right, well, based on that load, we either can fit all that solar here, or we have to scale down the sys, the system so that we're not exceeding the load. So that, that's how we've approached this one.
So then the, the last question, uh, you know, you indicated, hey, time is of the essence, we've got to get moving, things like that. The proposal that was put forward said, you want us to authorize, you know, the city manager to just get the report on his own and then just go ahead and sign a deal without the council seeing that. And, you know, you know, um, I, I just don't know that that's, you know, that's the way we do things here, and at a minimum, we should have a, a subcommittee look at it. But I think that, you know, the council meets often, like this month, we're meeting three times, and we can meet more if we needed to. So I don't think that we're the holdup by only doing once a month. I, I, I thought that you, the request for that was a little bit out of the ordinary.
Maybe I misspoke in terms of the, in terms of identifying where I've had concern, we had, we might have concerns about, about time. I think the main thing we want is, is that there's, uh, you know, a commitment to move forward. What we've had, what, what the other cities have done is we, we have a draft, um, staff memo and, and resolution that we circulate and then have worked with staff on any refinements that are necessary. But that, the resolution does state that the council is authorizing the, the city manager to move forward if, if we can provide a PPA that has, uh, net benefits. I, you know, I don't know, Rafael, if you want to.
And the concept here is, is we, we are encouraging councils to delegate the authority to staff as long as certain criteria are met. And, uh, that's, again, uh, the purpose of that is to have the bids move forward with confidence so that when developers bid, they say, oh, I can have strong assurance that this is gonna put, move forward if I put forward a strong bid. If, however, all of the projects were to go back to all of the councils to be reevaluated, then developers are gonna say, well, who knows what's gonna happen? I'm not gonna put forward a really strong bid because I have no confidence. That, that's the risk. I'm trying to explain how a developer might look at it, not me. The risk is a developer will have less confidence and then will assume that there's gonna be some drop-off and the pricing will then be, um, weakened as a consequence.
But when, but when somebody could meet every week to, to review this, it's, I don't see what the delay would be. I, I just don't see that, and I think the council has a fiduciary responsibility to, to make sure it's there. And I, I thought that that was an unrealistic request. Just my comment.
Diana?
Can you call up the, put up the map again? I just, I have a few questions about the locations of the things. The map that shows where the panels are?
Yeah, I can tell you which slide it is. Um, I don't have slide control. Uh, it's slide six from the presentation we just gave.
Anthony, are you there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pulling up. If you want to share the slides yourself, you're.
Oh, okay, I can do that, sure.
So while, while, while you, okay.
So, yeah, is this big enough? I can make it a little bigger.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So I'm trying to understand why, you said that in front of the library, there were trees. Why is it not going along the whole front of the train? Is there, is it, is this only being put over where there's already existing parking?
Yeah, I, I think so. I know that there's like a temporary construction trailer here.
But are those areas we could use as well? Here's where I'm going with it. This, this whole, um, solar panel along the front is, I think, fabulous. I'm less excited about the ones on the main building. We've already had the council object to that aesthetically. And, um, but I'd love to extend the ones that are kind of a no-brainer, in my opinion, along the front. So could we do that? Are those trailers gonna be gone? Why, why is there a break in the middle?
Those are trees there. Those construction trailers will be gone, but there is a couple of trees in that area, as Councilman Widmer noted. So there would be a break in any carports, but they could be enlarged.
One note, um, those are the Caltrain properties.
Yes.
This, the town would need to secure an easement from Caltrain for that to be viable, um, because we do need to grant, uh, um, certain access rights for maintenance to, uh, those panels. And, uh, that would need to be legally secured by the town before these could be.
The ones that are there too, right? What you're saying is true with the ones that are, so we already have to do that anyway, right?
Correct.
So could we explore extending it to the rest, if it's feasible to do that? Because that's an easier yes for me. I have a more of a hard time in, and then the next question is, I'm really in favor of saying yes to this, but what my concern is, is that if we say yes now, are we saying yes to this particulars of this design? So here's where I'm going with this thought. Well, if this, and, and when would this happen? Tesla's got, um, those tiles, uh, that look like they match our roof. They're not a reality yet, they're not out. If we could wait for those to do that roof, that would be way more exciting for me. What's the material on the other roof?
They're just solar panels.
But what's it sitting on, that, that roof?
There, there's not, it's not built yet, it's gonna be.
Oh, it's built. That, that's.
Not along the train tracks.
No, that's not what I'm talking about.
Talking about this area here, right?
Well, that's ancillary building for the.
Just the police auxiliary building.
Flat concrete roof.
All right, so that wouldn't be a problem. So the only place it's really a problem is putting it on the decorative, you know, the Spanish tiles that we just put in.
Right.
Can we say yes to this plan without committing us to the specifics of this design?
Yeah, I mean, this is not, I don't, we don't see this as the final design. We're, we're, um, you know, I think we wanted to get this in front of, in front of the council as soon as possible to make sure that there weren't, you know, to understand what, where the obstacles were, um, prior to finalizing a design. You know, I think from our perspective, you know, we don't want them, we don't want to force you to move forward with a project that you don't want to do. So, um, you know, our goal would be to, to design something that you, that, that you would want, I, you know, so, um,
If I might jump, jump in, so there are a couple of other considerations here. We are looking to begin construction this year. And we would need to have commonality in the, um, in the equipment set across the projects. Now, this is intended to be an ongoing program and that there will be future rounds, so this is the pilot round.
Right.
Uh, and our expectation will be that there are, will be future rounds. Uh, I would caution with regards to Tesla product announcements.
I know.
They don't have a good.
I know.
Track record.
Yes.
And for a variety of reasons. But certainly, if aesthetic concerns on the town center are a major concern, you know, we wouldn't want to include that in the design, and that is one of the things that we are seeking direction from the council on, if it wishes to move forward specifically on that question.
So if we, let me just clear, make sure I understood the answer to my question. So can we say yes to everything but the part, but that one part and still go forward with this? Or do we have to provide a minimum amount of product for you?
We do have the capability to do smaller sites and, uh, and I'm just looking at the numbers here, Dave. I can't quite see, this is, looks like 100 kilowatts, is that right?
Well, there's about 100 and, yeah, 109 of, um.
Yeah, if all of this were, we're done. I, I think, you know, from our standpoint, the concern here would be if there are, A, aesthetic concerns on town center and the town is not able to secure an easement from Caltrain in a timely manner. And all, the only thing remains is that small piece, which I'm gonna guess is maybe 20 kilowatts.
Yeah.
That, that is, um, would be the smallest site that we would be doing.
Right.
And there would be, it would be proportionally expensive for the level of effort. Now, the town could decide to move forward, uh, on that basis, but it might be, um, less economic than a larger installation.
What's, one other clarifying point I would just add, um, with regard to, you know, what you would be committing to. Yeah, so to Rafael's point, we wouldn't be able to commit to specific equipment, like a Tesla-specific tile roof, because, you know, we are trying to do, you know. But we could look at, could we put more carport here? That's the kind of thing we could, that's the kind of thing we could, we could go back and, and look at. One thing also, just to, you know, to note, is that the carport is gonna be the most expensive thing to build, because you have to build all those port structures around it too. So generally, you know, the more this gets weighted towards carport, the more expensive it gets and the, the savings, you know, gets, gets, start to get fairly thin. The rooftop provides the best, uh, you know, for economic value.
Yeah.
Elizabeth?
I've had my hand up a long time, but anyway, so I'm just wanting to say, the thing is, my question, and it's very, very basic, uh, you know, I understand your, uh, need, uh, and desire to move, to lump us in with this, you know, critical mass of, you know, potential construction project for the contractors to do the, the job. But, you know, when will we know if it actually pencils out? You know, what is our load, or, you know, how much do we really need? And, you know, what the scope is really gonna be? Uh, and I think that's what, uh, Councilman Widmer, Vice Mayor Widmer was trying to get at. I mean, I think council would like to know some of that before we give, uh, the city manager carte blanche to just, uh, sign it away. So that's my first question, and maybe we can talk about that right now.
Right, so, um, you know, the first thing to understand is that the, the PPA rate that we would come back with would have to be a, a saving, you know, a net saving. So it would be less than your, your current utility rate. So, um, you know, the, in terms of what, i- if it, if it's not gonna be less, then it doesn't make sense for you to move forward and we wouldn't want you to. And that's kind of the, that's the gating exit point for the pro, for, for the, for the project. You know, as far, um, in terms of, you know, what we, in terms of how we would, uh, address some of the unknowns that are still, that still remain, I think, you know, like, let's say today, the council said, absolutely, we want to move forward with this. We want to get it into this first round of portfolio. We would, um, you know, look at the, the, some of the questions have come up, is can that carport area be extended? What would be the sole, you know, what would be the solar production difference? You know, we're still in process of tracking down the, the, the existing load data. We would probably go back to the engineering drawings and look at what was the forecasted load. I mean, we'd basically just do a deeper dive.
Right.
Then we have, because we're still not 100% sure that the town wants to move forward. So, um, that's how we would vet those questions.
Because we had, we've, we've been, we've done this before and the end result was that, it was not enough solar to, uh, service the load, but you didn't have all the solar panels on the, um, on the rooftop. I, I don't, so a couple of things. The, um, the carport is fine, and I, I think that we'll be able to get the, um, easement or whatever from Caltrans, um, train, from what our public works, uh, advisor told us. So that's one thing. In your chart, it said that we would have a savings of about $11,000 in energy bills a year, but then the next line was, after 20 years, it'd be 83,000? Is that the, I mean, I, you went, you went by that really quickly, and I just have a question to clarify that, because I think over a period of eight, 20 years, to only save $83,000 doesn't seem to be very cost-efficient to me.
Yeah, I apologize if I, if I went a little too quickly there. The, the, the difference I'm showing is the 11,000 would be, is an estimate for the year, the first year savings. And, and our goal is that that would be, um, our PPA rate, the rate you're paying for electricity would not increase. But at the same time, PG&E's rates are going up 5% a year. So in year one, you save 11,000, but in year two, you're gonna save more, because the, your, 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 your cost of power from the solar is the same, but you're saving more money because the rates have gone up.
Yeah.
And that's gonna happen, or, you know, over a year, and compounded over 20 years, 11,000 savings in year one, it adds up to hundreds of thousands of dollars. I can tell you exactly what the number was.
Well, down below, there was like a $600,000 number or something.
Right, so it's basically in year 20, in year 20, you'd be saving 83, in year 20, we would expect you'd be saving about 83,000, but you're, but you have to add up all the other years in between, so that, that's where you get the 6,800.
I see, I see. Okay, so I, that was confusing to me, so sorry. Anyway, I'm, I'm all for it. I have a big problem with the solar panels on the roof, even the tile roof, because I think that it's, this kind of, solar panels are so ubiquitous anymore these days, even in new. even in new construction of new, brand new homes around. And I think that in in commercial buildings, you see it. I don't know. It it doesn't offend me as much. And if it's less expensive to put them on, and I think people are not going to look up so much.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah. Let's say we rule out anything on the civic center roof because it's been controversial, obviously, in the past. And we extend the amount of rooftop space we have along the train corridor. So maybe we get to 125 KW. Are you still interested in participating if if we, if we started that way?
You know, I I don't, I'll defer to Raphael. I don't think we have like a fixed target here. I mean, 125 kilowatt is still a decent sized portfolio, still a size project relative to other. We have some very small, you know, projects in the portfolio. You know, again, I think my main, I think the main concern is that with with taking the rooftop off and we only have the carport, it's just the, the costs of that carport are a lot higher than the rooftop. And so the overall savings that might be available to the city is going to be thinner. And that might mean the project has more risk of falling out. If we can't, you know, if it turns out, and you know, as you're, I'm sure all aware, these days with supply chain constraints, steel prices, I mean, prices are in in flux. We don't know what to expect, but we, we're, we're concerned on the carport side. That's all.
I understand. I just get, I I have a read from, from the his, little bit of the history I know about it and from talking to my cohorts here that the, the panels along the police department and the train tracks are non controversial and the panels along the civic center roof, particularly panels one and three, are definitely questionable. So that's why I asked the question. My other question is these savings, I understand you base these savings on a quoted rate with this PPA. How is the, what allows you to change the rate to us on the PPA over time?
To, to, well, we, we wouldn't change the rate of the PPA. I mean, our, our goal is to have a 0% escalation, meaning that the PPA rate in year one would be the same as is in year 20. We haven't completely solidified the financing in some. Traditionally, PPAs have a small escalation, 1% to 2%. If we, if we have to put that in for reasons that aren't, you know, fully our own desires, we we might. But that's, that, so we're not, we're, that's, I guess if that's the question you're asking, I want to make sure I'm asking you.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to figure out how much room is there for escalation in the PPA? Because that could blow the whole deal.
Yeah, that would be, I mean, that would be very clear. That would be a very clear term in the, in the PPA agreement. But we, we wouldn't, you know, we're, we, we, again, our goal is 0%. We have 0% escalation in our wholesale contracts. We're hoping to be able to do that with this type, with this portfolio.
And I, and to add on that, Peninsula Clean Energy is only looking to recoup its costs. So our objective is to maximize the benefit to participating local governments. And the whole model around aggregation is to bring lower costs there and bring lower costs on the capital side, tax equity and so forth. And we're going to, we're going to be 100% transparent over all of the cost drivers and why the the specific proposal that will come out of the RFP is what it is. So you'll have full visibility to all the terms and what aligns all those terms.
Okay, I I've got some comments and then I'll take Diane and then Bill. We absolutely should do this deal. It's insane to think for any reason we wouldn't do this deal. We're, the, the minimum, we're going to, we'd start out saving $11,000 the first year and as electricity prices escalate, we're locked in at a lower rate. We save money every year and at the end of 20 years, we get the system. Anybody that thinks we shouldn't do this deal is crazy. I want to do this deal at the lowest price to maximize the return. I thought that would have been on the carports, but if it's on the building, so be it. I, I, I don't think the solar panels on the building are a detriment. I think we should do it with the solar panels on the building. I I think this council will support that. I think if you want more power, you absolutely can extend the, the carport in the Caltrain area because it doesn't cover the whole area. There's also a parking area on Station Lane that has no tree cover that, or that has very little tree, trees around it because it used to be part of the parking lot that, that previously had a soul, a port, a carport and solar arrays on it. And it wasn't in your diagram, but it sounds like you don't really need more space if you can extend into Caltrain and you, you know, it sounds like you've got enough space to get, to generate enough energy to supply us. And and I'm comforted that you're looking at it on the annual basis. So it's irrelevant that we use less power in the winter and generate more power in the summer. It doesn't matter because we're looking at it on an annual basis in terms of total production and load. But this is a good deal for us. We should go forward with it. I I don't think there's any problem in approving this as long as we're saving money. And that's, that's the bottom line. We're not going to do that. We're going to approve the deal so long as the PPA enables us to save money. It's a no brainer. Diana?
I was going to say exactly the same thing. I think it's a no brainer. And I would like to explore doing more carport. I was disheartened that the carport's not more effective. So I agree, everything you just said. Maybe we don't feel that strongly about, when Elizabeth said that she could stand the, the solar panels, that was the person I thought who wouldn't like it.
Elizabeth changed her position from what it was five years ago, but that's.
Maybe it's a new era. And we should just say yes and then try to expand, expand it more on the carport side.
Bill?
Yeah, so when we're talking about the savings, those are just the fuel cost savings, correct? Not that, because the transport cost, we don't, we don't control, we're not going to minimize, right?
Well, the savings are savings against your entire bill. So much, you know, about two thirds of your bill is in distribution, transmission and distribution. So you would be saving on those dollars.
Yeah, well, they don't pay, we don't pay PG&E. Once we, we generate our own power, we don't have to pay PG&E. There's no distribution.
I'm not aware that that, that would be the case, is if the sun doesn't come out, we're going to want to draw from the grid. But, but the, the, my question is, is that we're just doing fuel cost to fuel cost comparison. Is that, is that not correct?
No, it's, it would be the cost of the PPA versus your entire electric bill. So you're saving against the entire electric bill.
Including the tran, the transmission costs.
That's right.
Alright.
Diana, did you want to make another comment?
I just wanted to ask about the battery storage. Is battery storage included in this?
We did not include battery storage in this because the site has an existing backup generator. And it just, it doesn't really pencil out to add battery storage on on top of that. You have, I mean, effectively, you have backup power already.
Am I wrong that eventually they're going to outlaw the kind of generator that we have? And that could come down in this fuse a few years, right? Am I wrong on that? I read that somewhere. I don't know where the source was, so. But I read that the kind of generator, that our, our generators, is it diesel? What is it, George? I don't know, but I read that they were going to ban those soon. So maybe that should be part of our long term plan with this too, would be some sort of battery.
Just, you know, just briefly on, on that. Because this is not the only site where we had the same consideration, where there was an existing backup generator. And we did actually start this whole project with the idea of trying to replace backup generators. But the problem is, one, batteries are still very expensive. Two, you don't, you know, if you have diesel in the tank there, you have a certainty of how much energy you're going to have in the event of an outage, whereas with a solar plus battery system, you're going to have, you're, you're not going to have the same level of certainty. So it doesn't necessarily provide the same critical, criticality of, of, of backup. And, you know, we're constrained on these sites by how much solar is generated. I I haven't, I I know, you know, I think we all are aligned and not, we don't want to see diesel generators used and run. The fact is that they're, they don't, you know, they have to be run briefly, you know, one or two times a month. But they're, they don't actually generate that much emissions unless there's some very sustained outage and everybody's diesel generator's running. But, you know, it's, you know, we, we have looked at it and there was a lot of interest on our side to see if we could, if we could pencil out and it just, it does, it doesn't. You know, maybe in the future, battery costs will come significantly way down and it will start to make a little more sense.
George?
The other array that Raphael and David's benefit that the mayor was talking about along Station Lane is right here on this slide. It's right across from your array number six. And in the original plan for the town center project, we had planned for a carport along there. And there's currently an EV charging station in that little section of parking already. And so my, my thought, Mr. Mayor and and council, was that if in 20 years, these systems become ours, these arrays would be on Caltrain property, this array would be on ours. So if there were ever any issue with respect to the Caltrain MOU and who retains that at the end of the day, this one would definitely be ours.
Those have trees right in front of them, George.
They, they do have trees here, but not as many as this shows here. This, well, it's, it's farther out. The parking is like right along in here.
Well, they have to do the analysis.
Yeah, they would. Yeah.
Okay. So do you have your hand up again, Diana?
No, sorry.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move to move forward with the agreement and give the city manager signature authority. If it all works well.
I'll work with the subcommittee if the council wishes.
I'll appoint a subcommittee.
Okay.
I'll get her motion.
Okay. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Polito?
Yeah, with the subcommittee, I, I agree. I.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, with the subcommittee.
Vice Mayor Winmer?
With the subcommittee.
And Mayor DeBolio.
Yes.
Can I confirm for a second that motion?
Diana?
Thank you.
Okay. And when you guys look at it, you'll look at that space that the city manager identified where that carport had been before, which is our property, not Caltrain.
Thank you very much. We're excited to be working with you.
Great. And we're going to delay item 21. It's, we've now been almost four and a half hours into this meeting, which is the longest meeting we're going to have this year.
I hope so.
Yeah, I do too. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Hi, Stacy. Nice job.
Yeah, thanks, Stacy.
Bye, Bob.
Bye.
Nice job.